The school board meeting will begin in two minutes. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in two minutes. The school board meeting will begin in one minute. Please take your seats. Again, the school board meeting will begin in one minute.
The February 8th, 2022, meet of the Marion County School Board is called to order. We are the Marion County School District Leadership Team. When we come together to work, we are efficient, effective, and productive. Our three most important characteristics are dedicated, transparent, individually responsible. To work well together, we must demonstrate respect, confront reality, and be accountable. We will always put students first. We will have a legacy of success. I would like to ask members of the audience to please remove their hats. And for the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please remove your hats, turn off your electronic devices, or put them on vibrate. Later in the meeting, up to thirty minutes will be provided for individuals to address the board on matters concerning the operation of the Marion County School System or the school board only. Presentations to the board are limited to five minutes and are televised. If you wish to address the board regarding a regular agenda item or matters on which the board customarily takes action, you must first complete a peach form located in the lobby. If you wish to address the board regarding a public hearing or a student discipline matter, please complete a line green form. These forms must be fully completed and received by the board clerk no later than 5:40 P.M. The procedures applicable for each are on a separate sheet. Board clerk, please call the roll.
Ms. Valerie Campbell, District 1, here. Mr. Don Browning, District 2. Mr. Eric Cummings, District 3.
Here.
Mrs. Nancy Thrower, District 4.
Here.
Mrs. Kelly King, District 5.
Here.
Dr. Diane Gullett, Superintendent.
Here.
Mr. Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney.
Here.
Thank you. Mr. Ben Whitehouse, Director, Student Pathways and Assessment, please introduce the individuals that will lead us in our inspiration and pledge.
All right. Good evening, Reverend Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Attorney Powers, Ms. Martinez Lopez. I'm excited to come here tonight and share a little bit about our upcoming event, a very large and popular event here in Marion County, the Southeastern Youth Fair, which we are excited to have a student representing who's going to share a little bit more about the program. But just for your awareness, this is the eighty-second annual Southeastern Youth Fair. We're having this here, so a very long-running program. It is the largest nonprofit all-youth fair in the state of Florida, and this year we have one thousand five hundred and thirty-six student entries in the fair. So we're really proud of our students. I know most of you have had a chance to get by there and see it in the past, and we look forward to seeing you all this year. For your awareness, we have provided you with a copy of the agenda in your box, so you'll be able to see all the schedule of shows that are available and be able to map out when you guys want to stop by and visit. But without further ado, I would like to introduce our guest student speaker for tonight, Ms. Peyton Davis, who is a senior at Bellevue High School, is going to lead us in our inspiration and pledge. Ms. Davis?
Good evening, esteemed school board members. My name is Peyton Davis, and I'm a senior at Bellevue High School in the ACE Program. This year, I've had the distinct pleasure of serving as the president of both the Bellevue High FFA Chapter and the Marion County FFA Federation. In case you are unaware, the Marion County FFA Federation is a collective organization of all the middle and high school FFA Chapters in the county. This allows for unity, camaraderie, and additional leadership opportunities. I'm here to speak to you tonight about the upcoming Southeastern Youth Fair. The Southeastern Youth Fair is something that FFA and 4-H members across Marion County look forward to every year. I've personally been involved in this fair since I was five years old. I've shown all sorts of livestock species, from cattle to rabbits to goats. I know from personal experience the great benefits that this fair can have on a young person's life. Not only does it allow students to get a small glimpse of our culture and build a relationship with an animal, but it also allows them to be a part of something that's much bigger than themselves. They're able to develop important life skills such as responsibility, record-keeping, and communication. These students are getting up every morning to take care of their animals. Having involvement in these projects allows for students to grow in personal development. From my involvement in the Southeastern Youth Fair, I've learned how to persevere. My freshman year, my pig was lightweight, my steer had a bad disposition, and my lamb had prolapsed. I didn't think that any of my projects would make it into the fair. However, I continued to persevere through, and I'm happy to say that all of my projects made it into the fair that year. This perseverance that I developed has helped me through other aspects of my life, especially the COVID pandemic. In addition to the personal growth, there are also many opportunities to students through the Southeastern Youth Fair. There are scholarship opportunities that are available to seniors to allow them to further their education. There's also opportunities outside of livestock. There's opportunities for individuals who are interested in home arts, horticulture, speech contests, and photography. The home arts show allows for students to show off their talents when it comes to needlework, shop work, and cooking. On the horticulture side of the fair, students are able to grow a plant and enter it to be judged. There are so many opportunities for individuals, no matter what their interests are. I'd like to take this opportunity to invite all of y'all to the Southeastern Youth Fair. The fair will begin on February 25th and end on March 5th at the Southeastern Livestock Pavilion. If you'd like more information, you can visit seyfair.com to find more specifics on the schedule, and as Mr. Whitehouse said, you'll also be receiving a program and a calendar. I encourage you to take this opportunity to come out and support all of your students and see their hard work pay off. Thank you so much for your time. At this time, will everybody please stand and join me in salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Ms. Jennifer Beck, Director Developmentary Curriculum Instruction and Digital Learning Secondary, please introduce the individuals who are celebrating during Black History Month.
All right. Good evening, Reverend Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Ms. Campbell, Board Members, Dr. Gullett, Mr. Powers, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. Black History Month is celebrated each year in the month of February. This month is an opportunity for our students to learn about the contributions African-Americans have made throughout our nation's history. Throughout this month, our schools will be honoring those contributions and benefits that many Americans have played to Florida's history and beyond. This evening, I am very excited because I am joined with Dr. Elise, the principal at South Ocala. She will be introducing three students from her school who have completed projects showcasing this month-long celebration.
Good evening, School Board Chair Reverend Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members Browning, Ms. Thrower, and Ms. King, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, family and friends. It is with great honor and privilege to introduce a few of South Ocala's fifth-grade Yellow Jacket Scholars. Kinsley King holds a future as a naval officer and engineer. Isaiah Dawson holds a future as an NBA basketball player. And Elena Lucero holds a future as a medical doctor. This evening, each Yellow Jacket has prepared a presentation in honor of Black History Month. Please enjoy.
Good evening. I'm Kinsley King, President of South Ocala's Student Council. Tonight, I'm going to talk about how Black History Month came into existence. In nineteen twenty-six, Carter G. Woodson proposed an idea. His idea was to have a week to celebrate and learn about Black history and accomplishments. He wanted Black History Week to be in February, on the week of Abraham Lincoln and Frederick Douglass's birthdays, February 12th and February 14th. In nineteen seventy-six, President Gerald Ford made Black History Week into Black History Month. This is one of my favorite quotes from him. "Seize the opportunity to honor the two often neglected accomplishments of Black Americans in every endeavor throughout history." During Black History Month, students learn about Black heroes such as Solzhenar Truth, the first Black American to sue a white man and win; Ruby Bridges, who went to Wyatt Elementary Schools so others could eventually too; Harriet Tubman, who led slaves to freedom. Every Black History Month has a theme. Twenty-twenty-two's theme is Black Health and Wellness. We learn about people and events like this because, as Ronald Reagan said, "Understanding the history of Black Americans is a key to understand the strength of our country." I do not think it is a key. I believe is the key. Thank you for the opportunity to speak in front of the Marion County School Board.
Good evening. My name is Isaiah Dawson, and I am in the fifth grade. To school board chairman Reverend Cummings and members of the school board superintendent Dr. Gullett and Attorney Powers, thank you for this opportunity to speak. I am going to share a poem with you tonight. The title of this poem is "Young, Beautiful," I meant "Young, Gifted, and Black." Young, gifted, and black. Oh, what a lovely precious dream, to be young, gifted, and black. Open your heart to what I mean. In the whole world, you know, there's a million boys and girls who are young, gifted, and black, and that's a fact. You are young, gifted, and black. We must begin to tell our young, there's a world waiting for us. Yours is the quest that just begun. When you're feeling low, real low, there's a great truth that you should know. When you're young, beautiful, and black, your soul's intact. Oh, to be young, beautiful, I mean, young, gifted, and black. Oh, how I've longed to know the truth. There are times when I look back, and I am hunted by my youth. But my joy of today is that we can all be proud to say, to be young, gifted, and black is where it's at, is where it's at, is where it's at.
Good evening. My name is Elena Lucero, Secretary of South Ocala's Student Council. This evening, I'm going to share information about Black History Month. It was created to honor contributions of African-Americans to the United States. Black History Month celebrates the freedom of all ZARCTD people from all over the world. Some African-Americans changed the world, like Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., Rosa Parks, Ruby Bridges, Harriet Tubman, and Frederick Douglass. On this board, you will see the contributions of famous African-Americans who have made a difference. We are thankful for their courage to make a difference.
Yeah, bring them on, bring them on up so they can give the picture. Y'all give these young people a bigger hand than that. To Kinsley and Isaiah and Elena, thank you guys for coming and presenting on tonight in front of all of us and in front of all those that are watching in the audience. But as far as those who are watching, there's a lot of people that's watching on YouTube. So we want to commend you for that. I was listening to everything that they were saying. Thank you, Kinsley, for letting us know what the key is. And Isaiah, thank you for being young, gifted, and black. You kept wanting to throw "beautiful" in there. It's okay, but black is beautiful, so it's okay to say that. And then to Elena, thank you for reminding us of those accomplishments of those notable African-Americans that played a part in our history, in the history of this country and the world. So thank you, guys. So you guys, please give them another hand if you guys have anything you want to say. Board members, any of you?
Yes, thank you. Folks, listen, we have such a treasure of a county here. And with this in mind, I would be remiss if I didn't bring up the fact that one of our schools, Stanton Weersdale, is celebrating their sixty-fifth anniversary. And we are working diligently to bring it up to modern times. Too much of it lacks back in nineteen fifty-six. So there's still work to be done, you guys. Put Stanton Weersdale on your radar, and our superintendent is working with the county. We're going to get some stop signs. We're going to get some crosswalks. We're going to get some things that are modern. So there's something for you to do right now, just like you were in Selma. Okay? Just a little hint for you. Boy, there's a lot to do.
I just wanted to say thank you to all three of you and all of the others, I'm sure, that you're representing back at South Ocala. This is a wonderful month for you to learn all about, and you have done a wonderful job of explaining to us all the things that you're learning. And I'm sure this was only a glimpse of what you've been able to learn this month. South Ocala in District 1, super proud of what Dr. Elise is doing there, and I know that you all are as well. And I'm looking forward to upcoming things that you all have coming there at school as well with Read Across America. There's just lots of great things happening at South Ocala Elementary, and you three are just examples of that. So thank you so much.
Congratulations, kids. And it takes a certain kind of courage and bravery to step up here and say what you have to say. So that just tells me that you already have the courage to do amazing things as you continue to get older. And I'm sure that's also a tribute to your parents and all those that really care about you, and that includes us. So keep doing great things. We're with you.
Yes. Congratulations, and thank you for coming today and visiting and sharing your gifts with us. It's wonderful to always see our bright students, and you guys are just amazing, and keep on being amazing. Come back and visit us some more.
And thank you again, and to your parents and your grandparents and your siblings that came with you today. Thank y'all so much for loaning your kids to us every day, at least five days out of the week. When they come to us, you see they come out better, and I'm just proud of these kids, what they're doing and how they presented on tonight. So again, to the parents, to the kids, one more hand. Thank you, Dr. Elise, as well. Okay, we got a picture. We did get a picture right. Thank you. Did the parents, parents, did you guys get a chance to get a picture of the kids? Okay. Okay. All right. Ms. Megan Magamal, Executive Director of the Public Education of Marion County, Foundation of Marion County, please introduce the individuals being recognized on this night.
Good afternoon, school board members. Board Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Member Browning, Board Member Thrower, Board Member King, Attorney Powers, Superintendent Dr. Gullett, and Ms. Martinez Lopez. One of the signature programs that we manage at the Public Education Foundation is the Golden Apple Teacher Recognition Program, where we get to recognize and celebrate and promote our outstanding educators in our school district. The selection process for our Golden Apple Teachers is very lengthy. It actually starts at the beginning of each school year. Each school in the district nominates a Teacher of the Year and a Rookie of the Year to represent their school. They then submit lengthy portfolios. There is an interview process, a classroom observation process, all conducted by a volunteer selections committee of ten community members, two of which I'd like to say thank you to. Ms. King for serving on the Rookie of the Year Committee and our Chair Cummings for serving on Teacher of the Year Committee. Through this entire process, five Teachers of the Year finalists will be named and one Rookie of the Year, and they are surprised on a caravan that was held in December. Thank you to all of our school board members for supporting those efforts. And then the grand finale is at the Annual Golden Apple Gala Event, where we announce the Teacher of the Year for the district. So I am proud to recognize this year's 2022 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Leah Bender from Westport High School, and also our 2022 Rookie of the Year, Ms. Melinda Kimball from Horizon Academy at Marion Oaks, and they're going to share a few words with you this evening.
Good evening, school board members, Superintendent, teachers, parents, and community members. I am so honored this evening to provide words of inspiration for this meeting as the 2022 Rookie Teacher of the Year. I still find it amazing that I'm able to use that title at times. You see, I never wanted to be a teacher. I had never planned it to be this way. Many of the teachers that you speak to will tell you that they always knew that they wanted to teach from an early age, and maybe that they were destined to be teachers, but I honestly started to work for the school system to be closer to my own children after my youngest went off to kindergarten. I just didn't know what to expect on my first day as a substitute teacher way back in 2016 in a fourth-grade classroom at Marion Oaks Elementary. But by the end of that week, I had just fallen in love with teaching, and I knew that eventually I would become a great teacher. I may have taken the long way around, but in the years leading up to this moment, I've learned so much. Whether it be from a reading coach who took the time to show me how to prepare a lesson plan, an assistant principal who gives me guidance and support, countless peer teachers and colleagues who share their knowledge and their encouragement with me, whether it's a secretary or an activities director showing me how to fill out paperwork, a guidance counselor teaching me 504s or IEPs, and a plethora of professional development. All of these things have come together to help me become who I am, but probably none so much as the inspiration that I receive daily from my students, because they are the ones that inspire me to keep going every day. Being Marion County's Rookie Teacher of the Year is very exciting for me. I've already, this month, had the opportunity to volunteer at our Tools for Teaching store, and I've been able to meet some of the amazing teachers from outside of my home school. Volunteering was a great experience for me, and I look forward to spending more time there. This year, I'm also hoping that I get to collaborate with some of the other rookie teachers and become a mentor or an ambassador. I'd love to be able to help problem solve with some of them, help strengthen areas that maybe they might need additional support in. But another goal that I have for this year is I'd like to get parents more actively involved. I'd like to work on initiating a plan at my school to get more parents attending SAC meetings, taking the initiative to volunteer, or just making sure that they're aware of opportunities that are available for their student by opening up lines of communication a bit more. I may not have planned to be a teacher, but I'm so glad that I did. I feel that I'm where I belong, and I am so proud to represent Marion County this year as your Rookie Teacher of the Year. Thank you.
Good evening, board members, Superintendent Gullett, and everybody in attendance. I'm honored and humbled to serve as Marion County's Teacher of the Year. I was asked to give part of the inspiration for tonight's meeting, and it took a while for me to figure out exactly what that might mean, so I went with what I know. I tied it to my E.P. Capstone course standards because that's what teachers do. We tie things to standards. In my classes, we focus on a problem or issue, consider all the stakeholders involved, listen to their perspectives, then develop solutions to that problem. So let me start with our MCPs stakeholders and explain what each of us can do to inspire each other. School board members and district administrators, come. Come see us. See what we do as your teachers and staff every day. Don't take the predetermined tour of all the advanced classes or the special programs. Go into every classroom. Come and see the class period where fifty percent of the students have below a 2.0 GPA. Then go see the classes where they're putting together backpacks for our homeless students. Then go into the inclusion classrooms where teachers are instructing students on three different levels at one time. Come and see. Come and listen. School administrators, we know you're working hard trying to navigate this new mandate or that new training. No matter what, remember the reason for what you do. Supporting teachers with your actions, helping to bring along new teachers, and creating school cultures that thrive. We see and appreciate you. Parents, we need you more than ever. Maybe it's different at the elementary level, but once students reach high school, parent engagement drops off dramatically. Come to your designated school board advisory or school advisory council meetings and let your voice make a real difference on a localized level. Education is a partnership, and whether your kid is eight or eighteen, if they are enrolled in school, we need you to play an active role in their education. Teachers and school staff, just keep doing what you know is right. I know it's hard, and I know you're tired, and I know you're hanging by a tenuous thread right now, but no matter what your VAM evaluation score says, or whether anyone has simply asked you today if you're okay, I see you, and so do your students. They know you show up for them. And the most important stakeholder are the students. Last week, I asked several senior English classes what they thought was the most important thing that I could say to you tonight. They almost unanimously said that they need more mental health supports in place at school. Not more videos or interactive computer programs. They want more people. More guidance counselors, not one per seven hundred students. More psychologists, not one that is only assigned to a school for a few days a week. It's fitting that this week is National School Guidance Counselors Week. So I spoke to one of our guidance counselors that said school guidance offices are similar to triage centers, that they can only patch up students for a few minutes. that they can only patch up students for a few minutes before they have to send them on to somewhere else. That somewhere else often ends up being a trusted teacher. But teachers are tired and we need help. We need all the stakeholders to get inspired, to step in and rally around our kids and our schools. We need more businesses to get involved with the Public Education Foundation to fund and promote these efforts, and we're grateful to those that have already done so. And we truly need to listen to all stakeholders, not just listen to respond, but to be open-minded and to learn. We cannot come together on ideas for education until all voices are heard. I hope my words bring some inspiration and motivation to all the stakeholders in Marion County so that we can put our efforts into our most precious commodity, our students. Thank you.
Ms. King, you got any comments? I'm gonna start, don't come that way.
Thank you for your inspirations tonight. They were wonderful. And Ms. Kimball, you talked about how you didn't want, you didn't know you were going to aspire to be a teacher and after I observed your classroom, you are a natural. You were cool as a cucumber. Your classroom was so much fun with Tater the Pig in there and the hedgehogs and I can completely understand why I was in there. I think, no, I know, every one of your students were engaged and they could tell me about what they were learning, which happened to be the different types of cows. So, and our Teacher of the Year, I didn't have the pleasure of visiting your classroom, but I trust and I know that you, by what you said this evening, you have a full grasp of what's going on and thank you for our reminders to all of our stakeholders, from the board down to our students, to all be involved in their education. So thank you both for your incredible job that you do in, you know, teaching our most precious children every single day. Thank you.
Yes, gosh, I want to thank Board Member King and Chair Cummings for being involved in the process of selection. I think that that just is a great example of how together we really do need to be and so your inspiration couldn't come at a better time. Everyone that follows school systems knows that great communities make great schools. So I hear your call to action and your inspiration and I was sorry I didn't get down to see the pig. I think I heard about the pig before I heard about you, which is a good thing because it makes all the difference when you can find any way to get kids engaged and get them interested in coming and I know that you both do that at a very high level with two very different populations. So congratulations and good luck in your ongoing selection process.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, thank you. Wow, I am inspired by this talk. I hope that you can make some clips, you know, of it. It got recorded. That was a great talk. We all got, we all get educated, reading, writing, arithmetic and all that. We all have a teacher we love that made all the difference, or two or three, that type of thing. But I drew a big dollar sign. We're up here doing business, having business meetings, and you guys are down there teaching. And we have to meet our responsibility. I salute the Education Foundation for bringing this up and making this golden apple thing work so we get this level of focus at the high end. But there's a whole lot of people right behind you, you know, that probably could have gotten it. But I am so inspired and I just hope that this gets broadcast all over the place. Your talk, your talk, both of you really. But I am just very inspired and we're going to try and send as many dollars in that direction and especially your mental health idea. That's incredible. You can't handle 700 kids on that level. You've just got to get in tighter than that. So thank you very much for the time, energy you do teaching, but the time and energy you took, both of you, to put this talk together and help us understand what it meant to you. Thank you.
I'm just gonna say wow and first of all, I want to mention that I'm grateful that I didn't have to speak first. So thank you, Chair Cummings. And the reason for that is I really had to gather my thoughts because certainly I want to congratulate you on your amazing accomplishments to both of you because your work speaks for itself and we know that because that's why you're standing here. But rather than to focus on that, I do want to focus, like as Board Member Browning was saying, on what you said tonight. And I believe firmly in divine intervention and some of the things that you guys spoke about are exactly the things I'm going to be talking quite a bit about tonight in my board comments. From getting parents way more involved and there'll be a picture I'll be painting tonight about what that actually looks like, specifically in our secondary schools, as you said, Ms. Bender. It's unbelievable, the lack of parent involvement that we have right now and the amount of apathy that's in our students and that trickles on into the home and maybe it's going from the home to the school and vice versa. But we have to get a real grasp on that and it's serious and we need to take it seriously. And that comes to mental health as well. When we were in Tallahassee, we talked to one of our legislators who's very passionate about ensuring that our guidance counselors can actually do what they're trained to do and not quite so much about administrative paperwork and not quite so much about testing and all the other things that guidance counselors do, but actually doing what they're trained to do and that's to be there for kids and be counselors for those kids. So I'm very passionate about all the things that both of you said tonight. And again, I'm firmly believing that this was not by accident, that my comments later on this evening are going to directly align with what you all are saying and I'm ready for us all to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies, for what you have been doing for years in educating our kids. I did get the opportunity and I think everybody on the board pretty much know I'm not an animal type person, but for me to go in the classroom with the pig, with Tater, that was a lot. And to see those students engaged with that swine is just amazing to see that you were able to relate that to education. So I really, really appreciate what you did with that. And then I had the opportunity, Ms. King, to sit in Ms. Bender's class. And you know, this process, Megan, that we do to go see these teachers in action, I know it has to be intimidating to have someone just walk into your classroom and just sit there, just a little, to sit there and then to observe everything that you're doing and every word that you say, but not only to observe you, but to observe the interaction that the students have with you. And that was so important to me and those students were engaged. And I think it may have messed you up, Ms. Bender, because I wasn't there a long time and it probably seemed like I wasn't interacting or wasn't even paying attention, but I promise you, everything, I was there. And you did a tremendous job in impressing me of what it is to be a golden apple teacher and I think that's why you're a golden apple teacher tonight for our district. As some of our board members have said, you resonated, some of the things that you said resonated with us, but I need you to know that when it came to mental health, we spoke just last week to our legislators in Tallahassee concerning mental health. That was one of the things, the many topics that we spoke on because we do too recognize that that is a situation that has to be addressed sooner rather than later. So we heard you, we hear you, and I promise you that we're going to try to do those things to make sure that you guys get the support. Because if we support you right, then you'll support the kids right and our communities will be supported and we'll have a better community. So again, thank you all. Thank you to the foundation for all that you do and keep doing the good work. Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you. Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Great way to start off the night once again. I recommend approval of the agenda for February 8th, 2022, school board meeting with the materials in the board packet. Those materials distributed to board members at the meeting and the audio recording as part of the official record of the meeting with the exception of the items D 20.1, D 20.2, D 20.3 that have been placed on discussion, as well as items C 6.1, C 7.1, C 8.1, C 8.2, C 9.1, C 10.1, C 11.1, C 11.2, C 11.3, C 11.4, and C 11.5 that have been pulled for discussion. Thank you.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Board Member King. All ready for vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the December 8th, 2021 Special Administrative Briefing and Work Session? Moved by Board Member King.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thrower. Are there any additions or corrections to the minute? Any discussion? There being none. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. I'll now ask the school boards returning to explain the rules governing persons who wish to address the school board tonight.
Thank you, Chair Cummings. In compliance with Section 286.0114 of Florida statutes, the school board has adopted uniform procedures for public speakers who wish to speak at tonight's meeting, either regarding one of tonight's agenda items or a matter relating to the operations of the school district. These procedures will ensure the public has a reasonable opportunity to be heard on school board and school district matters. A written summary of these procedures is available from the table in the lobby. Public speaker forms are also located on the same table. The completed forms were due to the school board's clerk no later than 5:40 PM. Tonight's speakers will be called prior to the business portion of the school board's meeting in the order of receipt by the school board clerk. Before you begin speaking, please state your full name for the record and spell your last name. Each speaker will have five minutes of time. However, if there are more than five persons who wish to speak, the board may seek consensus to limit each speaker's time to three minutes. When the speaker has one minute remaining, the speaker will receive a visual notice to complete his or her comments. Speakers may not yield to their time to other people. Speakers and meeting attendees are expected to conduct themselves in a respectful manner. Therefore, verbal attacks and profanity are strictly prohibited. Pursuant to the procedures for public comments, item six, speakers are not to identify specific individuals other than themselves or their child unless a statement is provided 24 hours in advance. The board is here to listen to your comments only. You may be directed to an administrator staff member following the conclusion of your comments for further assistance to address your concerns. If there are matters dealing with student discipline, including expulsions, they will be scheduled at the conclusion of the televised portion of this meeting. Parents may address the board regarding a discipline matter at that time. To ensure student privacy, only a parent or guardian may use a student's first or last name. Identifying references to or identification of other students and/or their families are also prohibited. A public speaker's speech does not reflect the endorsement, sponsorship, position, or expression of the school district. Thank you for your attention to the board's requirements. Mr. Chair, that concludes my explanatory remarks.
Thank you, Attorney. Ms. Martinez Lopez, do we have any speakers?
Yes, Board Chair, we have four speakers. Mr. Robert Schmidt.
Chairman, board members, superintendent, good evening. It's always encouraging to see teachers come up and express their desire, their need for parental involvement. I know that when our kids were growing up, our teachers also encouraged it and it made a difference in the kids' name. I heard about the drop off of parental involvement in high school. It didn't happen with us. As a matter of fact, we were probably busier in high school than we were in grade school. So anyhow. So that portion of the meeting is always encouraging. That's the good part of the meeting. This is the business part of the meeting and that's probably what I'm going to approach you about now, okay? Last week, I was watching the agenda as the agenda was published. I took and went through the agenda, looked at all the items on there and I almost fell into, I mean, it was amazing. There were 29 items on there with each of them with multiple attachments, tons of attachments, a bucket of attachments. So as I started pulling items to go through them, I saw that some of them started coming off and I said, wow, good. That means that the board is actually pulling these items to take in review in front of the public instead of me sitting there trying to divine some kind of information out of them. So what I did is I took the remaining, one of the remaining items that were on there and I said, okay, now what can I glean from this? I'm the public sitting out here trying to figure out what is being posted and then what am I supposed to do with this information? So I pulled one example to illustrate what I was trying to get at, C 11.6. Permission to utilize the State of Florida contract. You're looking to go and utilize a contract to put money on a contract. These are pre-negotiated, they're bigger contracts. How do you take and use them? That's up to the board, but I, you know, I think that that's a good thing. It's not that I'm saying it's a bad thing. But there are four attachments in that particular item. Two contract items and two spreadsheets. I looked at the contracts. I read through both contracts. I couldn't tell what the difference was. I didn't do a word search on that 14 pages of documents, but then I took and looked at what was being asked in the agenda item. This is what my take was that from the ask. You wanted the board to approve the use of a contract, I think, to buy air conditioning units for MTI. 300-ton air conditioning unit or 300 tons worth of air conditioning units? I couldn't tell. It's not clear in there. So I have no idea what you're actually buying or what you want the $125,000 for, okay? I'm not saying that it's not a good thing, okay? We all like air conditioning. But what I'm saying is that it's not clear what you're doing in that particular, on that item. I went through the spreadsheets, both of them, and I could probably make some assumptions based on what I read, but in that spreadsheet, there is no 300-ton air conditioning unit. There are 30-ton units and there are 60-ton units. So what is the ask? What is the administration asking the school board to approve? Are you asking that you take and approve $125,000 to use that contract to spend $125,000 to buy five 60-ton units or some other? I mean, it's just not clear. So going forward, okay, as I sit there and I'm just the public, okay? My guess is that you have a hard job. This is not an easy job being a school administrator. These are complex systems. School systems are incredibly complex systems. So getting down to what do you really need to put in there, stick to the relevant documents that need to be put in there so that there's clarity for everybody else that happens to be watching these things and that does go out there and pay attention to what the school board is doing, okay? So I bring this forward strictly as constructive comments and based on my observation, it's not as criticism to anyone. My sole intent of this is to take and incubate thought processes, okay? And how we can help you and how you can help us understand what you're doing. You have a hard job. I got it, okay? But I think that there are things that could be done that would make your job just a little bit easier. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schmidt. Ms. Martinez Lopez?
Mr. Chris Altobello?
Good evening, Superintendent Gullett, Chairman Cummings, board members, Chris Altobello, A-L-T-O-B-E-L-L-O. Making its way through the legislative session is a bill that would help get more support staff working in our schools. A new count of advertised vacancies makes clear just how desperate the situation is. Florida's districts, Marion included, simply don't have enough school bus drivers, paraprofessionals, food service workers, custodians, and other essential staff to serve our students. House Bill 1017 and Senate Bill 1576 focuses on education staff professionals in our public schools. The bill directs districts to first determine which support staff positions are mostly, are most severely understaffed and then to fund incentives to recruit and retain employees in these critical shortage areas. The bill also requires districts to provide paraprofessionals with a career development opportunity. As of January, the Florida Education Association found over 5,000 advertised open, non-instructional positions across the state, including 816 paraprofessionals, over 1,000 ESE paraprofessionals, and 300 ESOL paraprofessional vacancies. Nearly every school district is looking for bus drivers, custodians, and food service staff. Interestingly, those numbers don't even include Miami-Dade County, as a clear count couldn't be determined at the time. January's number is substantially higher than the vacancy count at the January's number is substantially higher than the vacancy count at the beginning of this school year. On August 2nd, there were 3,753 support staff positions advertised on district websites. Normally, vacancies drop throughout the year. This year, the staff shortage has ballooned instead. The picture is even worse compared to this time last year. In 2021, there were 1,796 advertised non-instructional vacancies. Support staff vacancies come on top of a severe teacher shortage. In January, there were 4,359 advertised teacher vacancies compared to 2,368 the same time last year. The counts don't even include the permanent substitutes filling many positions across the state that are no longer being advertised, which means the shortage is likely more serious than illustrated. The number of advertised teacher vacancies also has remained stubbornly high this school year. In the first week of August, it was almost 5,000. Visit the MCPS website on any given day, and you will find hundreds of instructional and support staff vacancies that contribute to these numbers. Our children are suffering as a result. To address the shortages of teachers and school support staff, FEA calls on the governor and legislature to do three things. Provide fair, competitive salaries that value experience for all education employees. To give highly qualified teachers the opportunity to earn multi-year contracts rather than face dismissal annually. And treat all education employees with professional respect they deserve. This includes the continual contractual right to have a voice in our evaluation process, which I'm told is now under attack, led in part by the Florida Association of District School Superintendents. HB 1017 and its Senate companion are steps in the right direction to address one part of our continued education crisis. We trust that our superintendent and board will do the right thing, whether it's given direction and authority to your bargaining teams, which is where the real local recruitment and retention effort takes place, or lobbying at the local and state level on behalf of our teachers and support staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak, and a shout out to my favorite school counselor who's home with my children right now, probably on the sofa, passed out. So as a former school counselor, I love my wife. Thank you. Hello, Kristen, and I'll be home soon. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Helen Hamel.
Good evening. My name is Helen Hamel, H-A-M-E-L. I am one of the over 2,500 instructional units in this county. I watched the strategic plan overview sent out by our superintendent, and it highlighted some concerns I currently face. Goal two is to provide a physically and mentally safe and supportive environment. Yet I am currently working on a contract left over from last year. A contract that does not provide any supports for COVID-19. We had an MOU. It listed additional supports, included protected sick time in the case that I or one of my peers was exposed or tested positive for the COVID-19 virus. This is gone. The MOU expired and was not renewed. Perhaps, it was thought, at that time that such protections were not needed. This is not the case. We have seen over the last month more absences and more quarantine needs than at the time of that MOU expiring, and yet there was no reinstatement. To make matters worse, we just saw another MOU expire that protected employees from punishment should they go over their allocated leave. A first-year teacher gets eight days of sick time. The current exclusion time in our return-to-work guidelines is five days. At a minimum, this leaves them three days remaining. Now, that doesn't take into account if they or another family member gets sick again. Now, are we to penalize them and risk termination because they simply do not have the time left? Or even worse, are we asking them to work sick? Risking the spread of illness simply because they cannot afford to take the time off? Why do we need an MOU in the first place? We have a contract to protect our rights and working conditions. Normally, I would say this is true, but here I stand before you in the second week of February, and there has been no progress made in bargaining my updated contract. There have been no tentative agreements made, and the next date for bargaining is not even for another month. When the majority of the bargaining unit cannot attend, as we will be doing our jobs, teaching the learners of Marion County. Let's talk about those learners. Goal three is to ensure that all students have access to highly effective teachers. We have to support those teachers. The fact that I have not signed a new contract and likely will not sign a new contract until the end of the year, and that I will see no change in salary or even a plan for change in salary until the end of the year does not help to ensure that I want to stay in a county that does not value my professional experience when I can look at other districts in the state who have already come to agreement. I spoke to you last year when we went to NPAS on a salary schedule that ignored my years of teaching experience in favor of raising the base teacher salary. You assured me that we had to be fiscally responsible and forward-thinking when it came to funding. This is not that. All I can do is look back on expired MOUs and an extended contract because I do not have a bargain contract for this year, let alone looking towards the future of next year. I agree that we must work together to increase student success, but my working condition are their learning conditions. And right now, they're in need of improvement. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
Mr. Gary White.
Hello, my name is Gary White, W-H-I-T-E. Parents, I am here to ask you to come to these meetings. If we have, by numbers emitted tonight, 52 mental health care people, we need for you to come to these meetings to learn and understand more, to get you more involved with your children so that you can be parents so these people aren't needed. This is the fact. We need you to get involved with your children. Now, I know you're watching this, so come be here. Learn what these good folks are trying to accomplish. Be involved with your kids, please. Learning what's going on in our school system of 35,000, 38,000 children and a $750 million budget has to be one of your top, top priorities. And those sweet children you have, I don't care if it's grade one through 12, they're still children, and they can be wonderful people, and you need to get to know them, and you need to get involved with their education. I please just ask you to come, start right here, and then let it spread out into the schools so that you can be involved with your kids' teachers. There are so many things to lift up here and learn and help with. This board wants your help and input. You are looking at support for examining procedures. Many, many procedures and ways of doing things that this board really didn't do. They are acting from old boards' presentations and procedures. And we are asking them to look at these procedures, look at the money spent, and dig in and examine more deeply. You didn't put these into effect, and you said when asking for our vote, you would make changes. These examinations may have those changes you promised. That rally starts now. What goes on here is so important to you, the parent, and your children. Bring yourself here. Thank you.
Is that it, Elaine?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve consent agenda items C. 6.1 through C. 18.1, with the exception of items D. 20.1, D. 20.2, D. 20.3 that have been placed under discussion, and items C. 6.1, C. 7.1, C. 8.1, C. 8.2, C. 9.1, C. 10.1, C. 11.1, C. 11.2, C. 11.3, C. 11.4, and C. 11.5 that have been pulled for this question. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second for discussion.
Second cannot be amended. Do we have a second? Do we have a second? He said second for discussion. It has to be just a second.
Oh, you just want to second it, or I'll second.
Thank you, Ms. King. All ready for vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Poles have the same sign?
No.
Pass is 4-1. Consent agenda item is pass 4-1. Discussion, D. 20.1, 2021 through 2022 Fiscal Year Annual Contract, District Administrative Principal Assistant Principal District Specialized Personnel, Instructional Personnel Professional Services Instructional Annual and Instructional Probationary. It was pulled for discussion, Superintendent.
Thank you, Chair Cummings, members of the board. Going to ask Ms. Oliver to come forward and provide some context to this item. We asked, we wanted this pulled for discussion to provide some background information regarding contracts, what the statute requires, and what our recommendation is to the board at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Cummings, Vice Chair Campbell, Board Members, Attorney Powers, Superintendent Gullett, and Mrs. Martinez Lopez. I appreciate the opportunity to discuss the 2122 Fiscal Year Annual Contract for our district specialized personnel. That is the contract that we would like to discuss with you out of all of those listed. Historically, we have given all of these contracts, and the district specialized personnel annual contract is the same way. We have given that every year. The district would like to move forward with the annual contract for this employee group, as we've done in the past. However, we do understand that the Florida statute only requires an annual contract for certain employee groups. And we also understand that employee powers, attorney powers, pardon me, attorney powers concerns regarding issues with giving contracts to employee groups outside of what the Florida statute requires. So we agree with those concerns wholeheartedly, and we understand. We will fully support Attorney Powers' advisement going forward in regard to an annual contract for this employee group. However, because we're in the middle of a fiscal year, we believe at this time it is best to move forward with this annual contract for the district specialized personnel, and then move forward with the advisement of Attorney Powers for the following fiscal year, and that will allow us to have conversation with this employee group so that no one is surprised or the decision is not made in the middle of a work year for them.
Thank you, Ms. Oliver.
Absolutely.
End of discussion, guys.
So Ms. Oliver, when you're saying this fiscal year, you're talking 2021, 2022. So new fiscal year begins July 1?
Correct.
So 2022, 2023, we intend to have that dialogue with these employee groups in advance of that new contract coming forth for the new school year?
Yes, we would want to have those conversations starting prior to that fiscal year.
So right now, essentially.
Yes.
Okay, because, yeah, June is faster than we think.
It is, it is.
This item is important in regard to making sure that we have the opportunity to talk to our employees first, to help them understand what the attorney's recommendation is statutorily, but to afford the opportunity to ask questions, so they do not think that we are trying to take away any property rights to the position, that we fully intend to recommend their appointment to the board, but we don't want there to be any misunderstanding on that. We value our employees, so we wanted to provide the opportunity for our employees to hear that directly from us first. Thank you.
So this is also pretty much like a point of clarity to be able to help this group of employees to understand going forward where we are, and this actually falls in the statute, correct?
That is correct, Chair, and as well, the board still approves their appointment. So this contract is another layer, but they still are board-approved anyway, so we would want to, and if they're watching, I'm sure many of them are, we'll have the opportunity to explain that to them. Yes.
Any other discussion?
I just want to be real clear because I'm thinking about the folks that are watching. I think about the employees that are in these positions. And I'm all for not changing horses in the middle of the river, but I just want to be clear on my understanding of why we're doing this now, bringing this forward now.
That was at the behest of, when this came forward for reauthorization, I addressed this issue specifically because with district specialized personnel, that is a group of people that we are not required under Florida statute to provide contracts to. There are statutorily classes of employees to whom we have to have contracts. The rest, it's at our option, and I'm not saying it's a bad idea for us to do that, but it is something that the board needs to review and reauthorize or review and decide they want to go down a different path at each new year. So, some time ago, several years ago, a decision was made to authorize contracts for district specialized personnel. And Ms. Oliver can give you a kind of a rundown of list of who all district specialized personnel are, but it's a variety of persons. Now, under statute, we aren't required to do contracts, as I said. However, essentially, whether it's by a contract or by the fact that there is an assignment to a very particular location and set of duties, and also the fact that they end up deriving property rights and security interests from the fact of that board appointment, there's not much difference between whether we do it via contract or via the appointment process, as we have been doing. There's no substantial difference at any rate. And so, that is what I have reviewed is for the board to be made aware of, as each year, that if they wish to have district specialized personnel granted contracts, then they need to weigh that and determine whether that class of employees, which could be an expanding class, I mean, we could, there could be other positions which go into that, or there could be other positions who are not currently granted a contract, who may look at district specialized personnel and say, "Well, perhaps we should be entitled to a contract as well." And so it's certainly within the purview of the board, and there are very good reasons not to, especially at this time, to discontinue the contracts that we have in place. But it is something for the board to be aware of. And so this is certainly not an issue at which my advice or interpretation would be something that conflicts with what the superintendent or staff recommendations are. It's simply a matter of an informational item. There are certainly very good reasons for us to continue, at least for now, and perhaps for the future, with maintaining contracts for this group of employees. But it is something for which we would need conversations with those employees and conversations among the board to determine whether we wish to continue with contracts in the future. As I said, currently, if a person who is appointed by the board as district service personnel, as they were prior to the contracts, they're appointed to the board, a location, a time, they're essentially, they're on the equivalent of a contract for a year anyway. And we formalized that with a written contract as of several years ago. And so the question is, in reauthorizing, do we wish to, in the future, continue that or discontinue that? And it's certainly within the board's purview, and I would certainly believe that the superintendent is correct in indicating that in the middle of a, and Ms. Oliver is correct also, in the middle of a fiscal year, it may create additional anxiety among employees if we were trying to explain that we're not attempting to discontinue something which is going to affect their welfare, their bottom line, or anything like that. These are all things that they are free to discuss with the board, to have public input on, and certainly their property rights in their position vest anyway, given that appointment.
Okay. It's been way more than just a few years that we would get a reappointment letter to sign, and that came pretty timely, and then eventually a contract to sign. So I feel like what I'm hearing is, is that the contract itself just more or less adds an extra layer of administrative work, because the reappointment letter is what really makes the position happen, what makes it legal. And if we didn't do it that way anymore, these employees would simply get a reappointment letter.
Yes.
Is that correct? Okay. Thank you.
Any more discussion? Any more discussion? So can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Pass unanimously. D twenty point two, agreement with IHS Global Inc. for gasoline and diesel fuel. Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell, seconded by Board Member King. Superintendent, this was pulled for discussion as well.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the board. Attorney Powers is going to speak to this one. Thank you.
As to IHS Global, this is a company by which we had, we request, or we receive essentially a set of price quotes regarding gas prices, fuel costs. And we receive that list so that we can properly maintain our costs with what's regulated by the state. So this company, this contract is about a sixteen hundred dollar contract. Now, this particular contract, we have some issues because there's a set of terms and conditions that make it go somewhat beyond a vendor agreement. And also, we're required, under board policy, to have the SUNBiz documentation of the company in order to proceed forward with granting a contract, or, for that matter, to have someone as a vendor. Now, at first, we had some difficulties with trying to get the appropriate SUNBiz documentation as to how they're registered with the Department of State, because they have different, as do many corporations, corporations under their primary corporation, they have subsidiaries. In addition, however, they have terms and conditions which would have to be accepted in order for us to move forward. I don't see anything that is difficult or would cause particular problem, but we do have difficulty in communicating with this particular vendor. Essentially, this is a subscription where we get, it's essentially kind of like getting a list of stock quotes daily, you know, where it indicates, "Here's the current Dow Jones industrial average," or something like that. We get that, and if we had a subscription to such a thing, and that subscription came with a bunch of terms and conditions, and a company may not want to go to great lengths for a sixteen hundred dollar annual contract in order to do what it is that we need to do. And so this is one, because we would not be following the exact normal protocols that we normally follow in order to get this subscription service, it needed to be brought to the board's attention for approval. I would recommend approval, given what we have in the contract, what our needs are, the fact that it is a low-dollar contract, and the fact that it is a low-risk contract as well. However, I cannot make that determination simply approved to legal form when it is not in keeping exactly with our normal protocols. So provided that the board feels that it is appropriate, given these circumstances, then we would proceed forward with this contract and attempt, you know, for next year's reauthorization to do anything we can, of course, to get additional information, which would allow us to do this within the normal protocol.
Thank you, Attorney Powers. Any further discussion? Let me state, this one was pulled by Superintendent and Attorney for clarity, so that we can have it for clarity.
My deciding to pull this to speak about it was solely in the interest of trying to make sure that it's extremely transparent.
Correct.
If we are proceeding forward with this contract, which we've done for many years in the past, but we did it as a vendor agreement, or we did it without the SUNBiz documentation. We've gotten more and additional since then.
Correct.
But now we're making sure that the board is well aware of where we are with it.
Thank you. Mr. Brown.
I don't know if this is, am I close enough? Okay, thank you. Superintendent, I appreciate you pulling this, and you too, Attorney Powers. This is important, because every time we move out of the normal protocol, it's so critical that the public become aware, at least of the subject material, and we, on the board as well. So I appreciate your explanation, and I appreciate it being pulled. And it would be a bit of a travesty to have it go by and not be aware of it, because I think we're going to have more issues on this going forward in the future, just given the state of the economy and fuels. Thank you.
So essentially, we as a board want to vote on things that are approved to legal form, and that's something that we've talked about. So that's why this has been pulled, because it's not approved to legal form. Because essentially, these folks don't have their SUNBiz registration in the state of Florida.
They have them under, we were able to track down that they have, it doesn't match. They have a subsidiary, which is the one that's actually doing the subscription service, and then their primary SUNBiz is another, besides IHS Global, there's another corporation there as well. And essentially, what it boils down to, in most cases, these are things that staff and/or myself, we need to get involved, are making sure to communicate closely with them so we get everything that we need, and we also resolve terms and conditions which may not be ideal, but which may be things that sometimes we have to hold our nose to accept, or we alter, and we redline them and send changes, and we go back and forth. Given the nature of what this company does, a big, you know, kind of oil company essentially, it's difficult to have that communication with them. And we're essentially, you know, we can hit the tennis ball down the court, but we have to wait for somebody to hit it back, or we just have to pay the fee, get the subscription, and move forward. And in this case, given the fact that we need those lowest price rates in order to comply with Florida statute, and also in order to make sure that we're being good stewards of the money that's given to us for our fuel costs, then my opinion is that this is not something we're buried in the contract as, you know, selling our soul. This is essentially something where we just need to accept the contract and terms and conditions as they are.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Thor?
Yes, Attorney Powers, and it sounds like through your research, you discovered that the parent company and the subsidiary are connected.
Initially, in the past, this has gone through approval as not approved to legal form, and never really was questioned farther beyond that. They just didn't give us the proper information. And because board policy indicates that we're supposed to have the proper information, we were able to find the proper information. However, we then have to, generally how we resolve that is we have to get a letter from someone who is on Corporation One saying we are recognizing the person in Corporation Two to be our signator for this document.
Right.
However, with a lack of ability to communicate with these folks, what we've run into is, we just looked at the documents that are available via the public reports, and we made that determination.
Got it, got it. So thank you for the work that you did, because accuracy of fuel costs, considering how much fuel this district uses on a weekly basis, let alone a yearly basis, is a big, big cost to us.
And it is a highly volatile thing, which goes up and down.
Yes, and the daily fuel pricing is important for us to have. So thank you. I'm good.
Thank you, Ms. Thor. Any other comments? Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously, pass unanimously. And again, that was pulled for clarity and transparency to the public as well. Commissioner of Education's African American History Task Force Exemplary Status Application and Curriculum Framework, can I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Thor.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Superintendent, once again, we pulled this one again for transparency and clarity.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Chair Cummings, members of the board. I with great pleasure wanted to bring forward Ms. Lindsay Barber to the podium. She has spent countless hours and quite some time far beyond the time I've even been here in Marion County facilitating this great work for the Commissioner of Education's African American History Task Force to lead us to exemplary status. I have seen firsthand in my time here the work of the team, of our folks in the field, teachers working together on this, and I know she has some, she's going to introduce some special guests, but my pleasure to have Ms. Lindsay Barber provide some background information and introduce this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gullett, and board members. I appreciate the opportunity to come and speak for this project that's really become a project of heart for me. It started in just discussions in 2018, and was, I would say, not necessarily ended, but postponed due to COVID, and we're finally here at the end. And I have some special guests with me. I want to introduce the chairman of the committee that our board members nominated. Mr. Raspberry is here with me this evening, and his lovely wife, who are community members, and Ms. Yvette Moreno, who also served as a committee member in helping to develop our application and our curriculum framework. I also want to thank Dr. Gullett and Ms. Tabra Irving, Mr. Frazier, who, from the moment they came into this district, were really thrilled with the progress we were making, and maintained contact with me to see how things were going and the progress that was being made. The Commissioner of Education's African American History Task Force is really an advocate for school districts, and they work to ensure awareness of requirements and standards for state education leadership and adoption of instructional materials and curriculum. And right now, there are currently ten exemplary school districts in the state of Florida for teaching of African American history and Florida statute one zero zero point three two and one zero zero three point four two. And hopefully, tonight, in the morning, when I hit send on that email, Marion County Public Schools will become the eleventh district in the state of Florida. And although we submit our required instruction report to the state every summer, and it's available to the public and published on our district website, we knew that we could do more for making sure that pride and respect are center and forefront for all of our students in Marion County Public Schools. Black History Month is wonderful, and I love seeing our students here celebrating Black History Month, but it shouldn't take a month for us to celebrate Black History Month. Black history should be celebrated all year round. Our students should have the opportunity to, you know, have great resources and curriculum in front of them all of the time, that sometimes our instructional materials don't necessarily provide. So it was wonderful working with our teachers to see what they wanted to expand on within their standards in the classroom. And like I said, it has been a project of my heart. I'm very pleased that the application to the Commissioner's Task Force is finished, and our curriculum framework is just the start, and we hope to continue implementing this in our classrooms and providing resources to teachers, because it is really important that our students see themselves in the materials and curriculum that we use in the classroom.
Thank you, Ms. Barber. Board members, I thank you all. It was in 2018 that we were approached about this law, this statute about the exemplary districts that had been mandated, I think, by Governor Jeb Bush. I'm not sure what year, Ms. Barber, but it had been some years that the statute was put forth for counties to be, school districts to have this exemplary status as far as the curriculum and different things. It was in 2018 that this board agreed that we should become an exemplary district. And we voted that we would move forward with that, and it's taken a while. Thank you, Ms. Barber, truly for the help in getting this pushed, because it required a community effort.
It sure did.
It required community input. Ms. Thor, I think you and I both went to the one in Alachua County, the training when it was initiated, Ms. Barber, and we had some of our staff members from around the district that went up and saw this infusion into the curriculum, which meant that it would go across every gamut of our district as far as the classroom. So thank you so much for pushing this forward and making sure that it got, it came to fruition. I was just looking at the site just now of the ten school districts in the state that are there. Alachua, Broward, Duval, Gadsden County, Hillsborough County, Leon County, Miami-Dade, and Palm Beach County, Pinellas County, St. Lucie County. So I would be extremely happy that Marion County would become the eleventh district in this state to follow the law. eleventh district in this state to follow the law in regards to this one. So if there's no other discussion, are you ready to vote? Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. I, I really endorse this, and, and Chairman brings up good points back in, in the Bush days. I was heavily involved in that, and it was very exciting, especially some of the just anecdotal things, like we took Marion County, which was doing quite well back at that time academically, and we took our, our, our experience and our abilities from our Stanton Weersdale efforts, starting around 2000 with my involvement, but it actually started before that. And we went up to Gadsden County and, and implemented our success methods from here as like a sister county. And that, that included, continued on through the Chris administration. So it was just a very exciting time, and a lot of progress, and a lot of effort by people like yourself. Just keep it going. Make it happen, you know, it isn't a month. And we've got Stanton Weersdale, as I brought up before, and we're, you know, we're, we're bringing as many people down there. It's called the Walk-In Zone. It's a small black community. It will get up to modern standards, especially with, with my presence on the school board. I, I just bring it up like a, like a special project. It's always been a special project, but it's very exciting to see all the support from the, from the school board. Thank you.
I just wanted to say thank you to Ms. Barber and to the Raspberries and, and the lady in the audience who also have served on the committee and, and all of those that have been a part of it. I know we haven't voted yet, but I just wanted to say thank you, just scrolling through and looking at all the different grade level content and how it's very age appropriate. And I know that there was a lot of work that went into this. So thank you so much for being a part of ensuring that this important curriculum is in our schools and in our students' hands.
You ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Pass unanimously. Congratulations, Ms. Barber. Please hit the send button and make sure it's former Senator Tony Gill. My frat brother know that we got it, got it through. Marion County got it done. Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the CARES Act Phase Six Early Learning Grant?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Browning. Mr. Browning, I understand you pull item C six point one. You wish to have further discussion?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Chair. The, this particular item, and I've, I've pulled several items, and, and I'd like the, if, if the attorney would put the time clock on some of these. I, I think they can move rather fast. Often, we, we don't put things on the floor because of time, but with that said, I think they can, they can be brought up, and I'm not a big fan of the consent agenda, especially when there isn't consent. So, all right, let's see. On this item, it's a time to celebrate. It's, it's a considerable amount of money, well over my threshold of about $50,000, $10 to $50,000. Staff salaries, paralegals, money coming in, received additional funding, very exciting, well worth the, well worth the moment to mention it and to vote on it specifically. So it's salaries, benefits, and for staff, and the kind of things that we're trying to achieve. It's $381,000. It's a lot of bus drivers moving from like six bucks to 20 bucks, or, you know, whatever the numbers are. So it's pretty exciting. This won't be specifically for bus drivers. They're targeted numbers, but it is for staff. So that's the reason I brought it up, and I, I really like to celebrate funds coming in.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. Let me, let me, let me point a clar, clarity, because he mentioned something, I don't want this to get out the wrong way. This is not for bus drivers. This is specifically for VPK because tomorrow we'll get a thousand emails saying that we did something that we did not do.
I apologize. I apologize. It's not, I, I meant bus drivers in a very generic sense, that the idea of, of just bringing up, bringing in funds. But I, I thank you for, for correcting me. I, I realize it's not for, it's for staff.
Yes, thank you.
It's not for, for bus drivers.
Thank you.
I get it.
Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the 2021-2022 School Advisory Council membership?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Browning. Mr. Browning, I understand you pull item C seven point one. You wish to have further discussion as well?
Uh, yes. Thank you, Chair. The, the key to this is, again, so that the public knows what's, what's happening, at least we can put a focus on this. We need the public to be involved. This is in a school advisory council, and I'm really in favor of this type of thing. Volunteer committee, parents, teachers, educational. But the real critical part here is no funds can be released for any purpose without approval of this SAC organization. It's just an opportunity to celebrate the participation of people in these, and a lot of times, people don't even know that this exists. So it's, it, not only does it exist, but it's a, it's a huge opportunity to pull parents in, and we're in a very prosperous county. It's a, we've got a lot of retirees with huge backgrounds, a very, we, we just got a lot of things going for us, so let's light this candle and get as many people involved as possible in these, in these programs, and this helps to let them know. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Approved unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the request to pay Cambridge fees for Bellevue High School?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Thor.
I'll second.
Seconded by Mr. Browning. Mr. Browning, I understand you pull item C eight point one. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. The, the key here on this item is, again, for the public, it's, it's a $800, $801, $881 item, but really, truly, it's, it's much bigger than that. It's much more substantial than that. And these things can get, can be confusing when you're out there just looking at them on a, on a website, for example. This is a big deal. It is, the staff is seeking an increase of, oh, $303,000, not $800. So at least that's, it, it, it's, it's an opportunity to, every time we pick up $100,000, again, I, I, I bring in the, our paraprofessionals, our teachers, and our, our bus drivers. We've, we gotta, we gotta get that money from somewhere, and we gotta pay better. And I really enjoy targeting these items because we gotta look at them all and, and let them be out there and let them be a little bit clearer and let them be, let money be, be saved in all of these areas so that we, we do have more funds to operate. It's not a bad program. I'm in favor of it, but I really have a problem with the way these things come forward because there's not even a dollar sign in front of some of these items. They, they come in as, you know, a series of numbers, looks like a serial number rather than a, it just needs a dollar sign, for example. And that's all I have, sir.
Thank you.
I am in favor of it.
Thank you, Mr. Browning. All in favor signify by aye. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, Chair. Before we vote, I, I would like to ask Attorney Powers a question. I was trying to text you. I don't know if I should abstain from this vote because I have a child in this program at this school. I, I think it might be cleaner if I perhaps abstained from this vote, or I would like the recommendation from Attorney Powers. My apologies for not addressing that sooner.
You certainly may. However, I do not believe it's necessary, given the fact these are routine items, and these are also held for additional schools as well. We've got this program in, in particular, I, you, you may have a student, a, a child who's a student at a particular school, and, you know, you wish to approve some funding resolution for that. I don't believe that abstention is necessary. However, I believe that it is certainly within your purview, and it, it...
From my understanding, Vice, there is no conflict of interest.
Okay.
Because your child's in that program, my child's in the next one.
Okay.
So there's no conflict.
I wouldn't think it'd be a issue.
Perfect. I just, just wanted to, for clarification, we're being transparent here.
Yes, ma'am. So, ready, ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Passed unanimously. May I have a motion to approve the request to pay international baccalaureate fees for Vanguard High School?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thor. Mr. Browning, I understand you pull this item, C eight point two. You wish to have further discussion?
Uh, yes, thank you, Chair. Uh, this is a pretty substantial increase, and again, it doesn't have a dollar sign on it, small, picky thing, but when you're talking about a big number, suddenly, a couple hundred thousand dollars really matters, and I like, I like people to at least understand when they're looking at it. And we'll get to that, and I won't mention it again, we've got a lot of these with no dollar sign on the, on the number. But this particular one, it's an increase from $54,000 or $56,000. There's a little question here, but in one location it's $56,000, in one location it's $54,000, but it's being increased at $245,000. And, and these increases, this kind of expense, it's big money, and it, and I'm a businessman. I know we, we get, some folks get tired of hearing me say, "These are business meetings. This is a business situation. We're not up here teaching. We're really making dollar decisions that will impact children's, our, our students' future, their, their lives and our employees." So people should know, that's why it's on the floor. I am in favor of it.
Thank you. There is a dollar amount on this one. The dollar amount is $56,000, $49,000. That's the dollar amount for this, and the limit is up to $300,000. So there's a dollar amount that's on there. Maybe you just sincere, Mr. Browning, but there's a dollar amount there.
Yeah, the, if you, methodology and framework and the financial history, it, it's increased So that's, that's the, it's, it's a big program.
Correct.
That's, that's, that's my, my rationale. Thank you.
Yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Passed unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Browning, for that one. May I have a motion to approve the disposition, C nine point one, may I have a motion to approve the disposition of tangible property?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thor. Mr. Browning, I understand you pull C nine point one. You wish to have further discussion on that one?
Yes, thank you, Chair. And my, my thought here with this item is, you know, I'm a big revenue guy. I, I just love revenue because it helps you pay the bills, and it'll help us with, starting with the bus drivers and moving on up through the, through the teachers and the veteran teachers. So when you move off, when, when, when you get rid of something as surplus or as old, there, there's so many opportunities. I've been involved lightly and mostly as a, as a customer with, with, sort of like Army surplus, but that was, that was going way back into the 40s and 50s. But, but when you have surplus goods, there's a lot of value there, a huge amount of value. And one of the, one of the big values is in instruction like MIT, I'm sorry, MTI. It's, it's a chance when you're teaching, when you're learning, if you can break things. It, it can be a little bit out of date, that's fine, but if you're gonna, if you're gonna be teaching somebody how to handle, for instance, a, a computer repair, all these different opportunities that are coming up, and you can also repair these, and there is a huge market. You can teach your kids about programs, and I've talked about this before, of setting up a business like a, like an eBay-type business, and they, they learn so many things in addition to, to the technical side of things. So when you've got all this and you, and you read through, oh my gosh, it's some, I'd like to, I'd like to learn how to repair, take these apart. I mean, items after item, if y'all have time, go into it and look. Cameras, computers, processors, there's just so many things, battery modules, things that might be a little out of, out of step, but if you're gonna teach someone how to, say, have a, be a, a, a repair person for a refrigerator, the, the kind of things that it makes a very viable business, you want to be able to break things. You go in and buy brand-new stuff to, to teach with, and this is just a huge opportunity. I'd like to see it addressed further. I don't have any specific plans for it, but it certainly warrants, I was planning about three minutes on this one, it, it certainly warrants it, a million dollars' worth of items, it's not worth the million now, or it's worth more than that if you, if you merchandise it properly. I'm a photographer, old cameras that would be considered anti, uh, uh, non-functional, for example, they're, they're antique, they're worth more, more than they were in the beginning. So I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of doing a better job with this. I'll see it through this time, but I've about had it with just sending this stuff down the road and a million, a million and some, and it's just too easy to put it, it doesn't work for us, doesn't mean it couldn't work for us if we figured it out a little bit better. It could be a, a revenue opportunity. Thank you, Chair.
Chair Cummings, I would like to add, because I've been looking, you know, at these items, and we're talking, some of them may be up to 23, 20, 15 years old. So maybe it would be good if Mr. Browning, maybe you could figure out a way that would be a, a good way to find that million dollars or whatever. If you're that creative, it sounds like you have great ideas to figure that out. So maybe you could have, have that suggestion rather than...
I'd be glad, Chair, may I?
Yes, sir.
I'd be, I'd be glad to, to be an advisor, absolutely. I'd be glad to be an advisor in that particular arena and, and help set these up. There's, the world has changed, and it's, it's a pretty exciting place.
Right. Well, that's why when I see a computer that's 20-something years old, in my mind, I'm like, is it, you know, when we have students, is it making sense to work on something that's 20-something years old when technology is constantly changing and stuff? And I want to make sure our students are moving forward and not back.
Right. They wouldn't be using the old one, they would be using it for its original purpose. It, it's repurposed as, say, a museum piece. All you need is a buyer, and it's exciting. And, and then to be able to go in the market, if you're in business and you're repairing computers, you, somebody's favorite computer, like I love Macintoshes, it's all I've really ever worked with. I'm not a big Windows fan, and so, you know, I might have an older unit and it needs to be handled, and I'll spend, spend big money to keep that thing going because I'm used to it. It's just, it's just a, it's just a...
Exactly. Right. And that's what happens. I'm a big Mac person, too, and I have found that when I keep it long enough that those programs become obsolete. So you do have to pay money into even the older computers and stuff, so I'm just wondering if it makes complete sense, but we could probably save that for your advisory board and stuff like that. Okay.
And, and, and thank you guys for that, that, that discussion. Again, just transparency, yes, the dollar amount is 1.5, 1, 1,528, $212.76 that this is going to be disposed of, but there is a, and anyone can see this, what they pulled up on the agenda, there's a very important sentence in this. It says, "All income generated through this process is recorded as miscellaneous revenue in the General Revenue Operating Fund." So this stuff is obsolete, some unreparable, and it will be sold at public auction, scrapped for valuable metals, traded in for new equipment, donated by... and it will be sold at public auction, scrapped for valuable metals, traded in for new equipment, donated by board action, or cannibalized for parts. So, I don't want people to think we're just taking all this stuff and putting it in the pile and just dropping it in the dump. Whatever we can recycle, we're recycling, whatever we can resell, we can sell, that we can get something out of it to come back to the district that is part of this process, and so I just want everyone to, sometimes we say, we, we have these conversations and people will say, well, they just thrown away a million dollars' worth of stuff, and that's not the case, it's, it's responsible recycling or whatever we can do to get something back out of it, so. Are we ready, we're ready to vote? All in favor, signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Passed unanimously. May I have a motion? C ten point one, may I have a motion to approve the monthly financial report, December twenty-twenty-one?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
A second.
Seconded by Mr. Browning, Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C ten point one, you wish to have further discussion on this one as well?
Yes, sir, thank you Chair.
Yes, sir.
This is a, this is worth thirty seconds because it's a, it's a, a road marker, it's, we're, we're moving along through the, through the budget year, and it's, it, it's very exciting to be given responsibility to be involved in these big numbers. I mean, these are bigger numbers than I've ever dealt with, and I will keep it to thirty seconds, but it's two-hundred-and-thirty-six million dollars. It's, it, for those that are out there that are following this and helping us to raise the money, and they're paying in the money, and we're helping us to, with our students, that's a lot of money, and that's a road mark, and I think it needs to be acknowledged and, and not put, you know, just, just brush on by. We are at, out of seven-hundred million, seven-hundred plus, seven-hundred, say fifty, we're two-hundred, we're, we're a quarter of a billion dollars, so that's, I, I think it's a wonderful road mark. It shows, shows the prosperity and the size and the, the depth of our, of our district and what Superintendent has to, has to deal with. Thank you, Chair.
All ready for vote? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Post have the same sign, passed unanimously. May I have a motion, C, C eleven point one, may I have a motion to approve the adjusted pricing on items found on bid three-eight-three-two GM two-way radio communication equipment due to volatility in the marketplace? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Throer. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C eleven point one, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, sir, thank you Chair. We really, I think we really need to tighten things up, we've got we've got big money flowing through and changing, this one changes the price on things, and the vendor things out of their control while they started like last, last October, and I get it that we're, we're, we're coming out of a pandemic and prices have moved around because a lot of money has been put in the M-two on the national level, I get all that, but October to October, it ought to hold solid, and I don't think that, I suppose they could try and do a, it, it is in the contract, force majeure, where there's a, an act of God or a, or a, or a pandemic or something like that, but this is well, this was past the, I think, the success phase of it. I'm just not in favor of, because prices go up, we let, we just go ahead and pay. I'm just not in favor of that, and, and I'm, I would vote no on this.
Ready to vote? Any other discussion?
I would like to speak to that because it's my understanding anyway that when it is part of the bid process, when a price changes, that is a signal to the team that does that negotiating, I don't, I hope we don't just lay down and, and pay whatever they say we need to pay. We pay our bills on time, we're pretty attractive business partners. So, I could use a tad bit more information and background on that one since it was brought up.
And I'd be very happy to have it, to have it, to be pushed off, you know, and not, because I'm not in favor of it. Once we, once we get a bid and once we get that in, they need to handle it, now, I'm not saying that they can't bow out of it, but they, they, they need it, as, as Chair, Board Member Throer says, that they need to, they need to work their way into maybe a change, not just lay down on it. And so I, I couldn't let that just fly through, because I had not agreed to it and, and don't.
Chair Cummings?
Yes, ma'am.
I don't know, I, I feel like we have a lot of staff here tonight, maybe there would be someone in the audience that could speak on this. I don't want to kick this down the road if we don't have to, two-way radio communications and having those radios work are pretty critical to our mission of, of safety, it's the best way to keep in touch with each other on these, especially these really large school campuses or campuses where there's a lot going on. So, I just would like to get some reassurance that there is a process in place for when prices do change, because this is just one example. Every day, it seems like construction prices and costs go up, you know, our fencing, all of those things. So, it is important in terms of the larger conversation to know what we're doing to try to hold the line financially as, as, as best we can in the midst of all of these increases.
And I, I too agree that we do have a lot of volatility in the marketplace, we know that as consumers. Prices are changing dramatically, I'm, I'm very common sense when it comes to price adjustments, and I know from October, Mr. Browning kind of mentioned from October to October, that there should be some stability in prices, but from October to October, when a pack of chicken wings go from seven dollars a pack to twenty-five dollars a pack, that's not stable for me. And I don't think that's stable for the majority of people, and I understand where there is some concern here, but when it comes to safety for our, our staff and our schools, this is one area that we, we cannot kick down the road. So, Superintendent, there's, if Mr. McFadden is here or someone here that can speak to this, we can speak to it, and then we can move on to, with the vote, but I think.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I, I have no problem with the content, we, we need the radios, I have no problem with the communications. What I have a problem with is if you bid it, then do it, don't bid it, because it, it's sort of a trick, you know, you can do a low bid and then say, oh, wait a minute, we've got to raise this, and, and, and all the rest of the competitors here passed by that time, you've been awarded the bid. Just don't bid it like that, and if you do, you know, I mean, somebody changes, changes a bid on me, I'll probably never do business with them again, that's, that, that's my issue. Now, there is, as I say, there's force majeure, it is in the contract, it's a very big, deep contract. I'm, I just have trouble with it, and I don't like, you bid it, do it, and that's what we're paying you for. You know, if we gotta go out to somebody else, I would rather we go out to somebody else and pay it, you know, but I don't want to get too deep into it, I just wanna, I just wanna be better steward, stewards, it's, it's not easy, you can't move, move numbers on me, once you say how much, you know, you make a bid, we have a, we have a process, that's, that, that's my point, and, and, you know, I'm not, I'm not saying that they're not competent, I just don't want it to come flying through there, and especially without discussion, thank you.
I see Mr. McFadden coming down the aisle now.
Chair, if I may, Rick Collins is here and can speak to this, he oversees the, the process and can speak, thank you.
Thank you, because he does do the bidding.
Yes.
Good evening, to speak on this, the vendor approached us with a letter from Motorola. The vendor that we have is an authorized reseller of Motorola radios, which is the radios we have on our bid.
I'm having trouble hearing you, sir.
Motorola radios are the, the radios that we bid out for the district. The vendor that was awarded our bid received a letter from Motorola stating that they were gonna receive an increase in price from six to ten percent across the board for the Motorola products. Therefore, the vendor could not hold his pricing that he bid and still make a profit. We have, in our bid language, a process that, where the vendors have to follow in order to request a price increase, and part of that is to prove a hardship, and then we present that to the board, it's your decision whether you accept it or not. If you look at the bid tabulation, the lowest vendor that was awarded, even with these price increases, is still lower than the second and third place vendor, original pricing. So, I think they, they gave us a fair bid in the, in the beginning, we've done business with this company for quite a while, and I think it's a substantial request based on the marketplace right now.
Thank you, that's.
Ms. Throer.
Thank you, Mr. Collins, and yes, the Motorola radios really have great coverage at a very long distance, actually, almost all the way down to the villages, believe it or not, and so I would be very reluctant, based on what you shared and, and my background with them, to not vote for this tonight. I know how critical they are to, to our mission, so I really appreciate you being here tonight and, and explaining it in this forum, thank you.
The, the other option would be to formally cancel the contract and then rebid it, which obviously takes several weeks to, to do that, and then take it back to the board for approval for the new, the new bid. And if, honestly, if I think about it, if we did rebid it, I would imagine we're gonna receive a heftier price increase than this request, in my personal opinion.
Vice Chair?
And our, our equipment request was for this specific company, I mean, it was for Motorola, and so it, it's not like they are, are able to offer us an alternative product, because we are asking specifically because of, as Ms. Throer says, the value of the equipment and the ability that it has warranted our district to be successful using this particular piece of equipment. So, in just looking, our, our contract isn't with Motorola, our contract was with the vendor, and, and so, looking at this, but that's what our contract said to bid this particular product, so they're at the mercy of what we've asked for them to give us, and now, the, the company itself, Motorola is what's raising the prices, so I too concur with, with Ms. Throer. I appreciate the dialogue that we've had here, and thank you so much for being here to give additional clarity, but understanding the value of what this, the need is for our district, frankly, things coming from overseas are costing more, and, and hopefully, it's not gonna be stuck on, on a barge somewhere, and we'll actually be able to get them whenever we do need them, so, thank you.
Thank you, and you did say, Ms. Collins, that our third, second and third place bid was still substantially higher than this amount?
Correct, my buyer that handles this bid, if you look at the tabulation attachment,
Correct.
you'll see the, the pricing that he included that shows what the requested rate increase, rate increase would be. That requested rate is still lower than the original pricing from the second and third vendor.
Thank you.
So.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
All opposed, have the same sign?
No.
Motion passes four-one. May I have a motion to approve the bid three-nine-zero-eight GM interactive flat panels, whiteboards, and related equipment, this is item C eleven point two?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Browning. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C eleven point two, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, sir, thank you Chair. Yes, the, this is the second time that I've brought this up in my short history on the school board, but I, we have a saying out in, in business, when you're, when you're, somebody's asking for bids, it, it, it is in great form to send out five-hundred requests and, and get back one or two or three or four or five. It's, it, it just isn't, it's, we're either wasting a lot of money and sending it out, and, and I'm just, I'm, you know, we, we just gotta be really, really prudent in the stewardship issue, because these are big numbers, this one's eight-hundred thousand, and while I'll, I'm gonna go along with this, but it really needs to be aired, we need, the, the people looking at this need to know that we're, that we're really on our game, and this, this list has to be called down. If you're repeated, repeatedly sending out five-hundred things, there aren't five-hundred people that do whiteboards as far as I'm concerned, I don't know, but it's very, very confusing, very difficult, and it's kind of like extra chatter, so I'm, I'm, I'm not in favor of this method. The eight-hundred thousand is a big number, clearly, almost a million dollars' worth of this, so we, we just gotta be really, really sharp on it. And when I see that, I, we call it padding in the, you know, look like there's activity, but if, if, if they're not legitimate, then let's don't, let's don't deal with them, and let's just deal with legitimate suppliers and focus in, perhaps we can, we can, we can strike a better deal, thank you, Chair.
Any further discussion? Ready to vote? All in favor signify by aye?
Aye.
Post have the same sign? Passed unanimously. C eleven point three, may I have a motion to approve the bid three-nine-one-six-eight-H multi-purpose paper for central warehouse, six-month term contract?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Browning, Mr. Browning, I understand, pull item C eleven point three, you wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, thank you Chair. Again, this falls almost in the same camp, a hundred-and-twenty-eight invitations and one response, that to me is just a, it's a single-source bid, and I, I, we gotta tighten this up, we're, we need money, we need to be really sharp stewards. I, I, and I'm criticizing the system, not the people, the people are out there working, I know that they're like on overload, but we, we, I think, can, if you got a hundred-and-twenty-eight items we're sending out, and, and we get one, and this repeats itself, it's, it's a mistake in, in terms of purchasing, and, and being a vendor out there over many, many decades, it just shows weakness, and it can be manipulated by the, by the vendors, and you end up paying more. So, I hate single source, I can't, I can't abide it, and this is a two-hundred-thousand-dollar item. I'll, I'll go along with the bid, but it needs to be brought up, it needs to be discussed, and I, you know, I, I would like to see some systems change in this arena, so that we can do a better job potentially steward-wise. And again, it's not a criticism of individuals, I don't criticize individuals, thank you, Chair.
Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, since it's been brought up, we might as well ask why? Why is it a hundred, you know, going out and, and only one response?
Well, we, we saw a hundred-and-twenty-eight invitations, there was one vendor that sent in a bid, and then there was two letters that came back as no vendors, when you look at this process, I'm just, before you say anything, I, I look at the process, and I've talked about this process, I've asked about it, we advertise out on, we put it out there freely to the public. So, anybody who has met the minimum requirements to be a vendor has the opportunity to make a bid, correct?
In our system, as far as a vendor app, we have directions that are pretty clear on our website, that anybody that wants to participate in a bid can sign up to receive notification via email anytime any one of our bids. notification via email anytime any one of our bids goes out. So it's totally open. A lot of our bids for the higher dollar values, we even advertise in the paper. Eventually, we look to go to electronic bidding, which will hopefully even broaden the scope of participants even more. But yes, it's on the web for anybody and everybody to witness and see.
And I agree with my fellow board members that competition brings about better prices, better pricing. But I mean, we can't make anyone submit a bid in this type of situation. I think all we can do as a district is put it out there for them to bid, and those, that's like making the fish get on the hook. You can't make the fish get on the hook. They have to want to take the bait. So if y'all have any further comments?
Yes, Mr. Collins, my understanding is, is that in the public school business realm, there are some pretty stiff requirements for people to bid with us. And obviously, we want to do all we can to make sure that the requirements are not overly burdensome while still protecting our district. Maybe you could just speak to that for a second, because it does jump out that, you know, one paper company only bid. And I know you've got a lot of background on this, and you're here, so.
So a little history on this bid. We used to do it for a year term. We saw less and less competition over the years, and paper's very volatile, and the paper market is very volatile. So we decided to try a six-month bid in order to hope bidders would be able to lock, feel comfortable locking in a price for six months instead of a year's term. That still hasn't been the case, but this company has bid for years. I can't tell you other than, other vendors may be a little nervous to lock in a price for a set, a set time, why other people aren't bidding, but.
Is it pretty typical across other districts that you know of?
I don't, I do know that this vendor does supply a lot of districts. I don't know, I haven't looked at their bids, because they're probably not set up exactly like ours. They may, this type of paper may be included in another general bid that, you know, another district does. Ours is specifically broken out for this, this set of papers, so.
Right. I was thinking more about other districts. I was thinking more about other districts only getting, you know, maybe one bid.
Right. That happens pretty frequent, in a lot of different avenues. Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
You make a great point on the cost and availability of paper. It is very, very volatile, especially right now. And so I could see vendors not wanting to lock themselves in at all, maybe even longer than three months, frankly. And so I say we move forward with this, because we at least had one.
Correct. Office paper, which we buy off of a different contract with Office Depot, the lead time right now is like eight, six to eight weeks for truckloads of copy paper. So it's an ongoing battle.
Any, any further discussion? Thank you. All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Passes unanimously. C eleven point four. May I have a motion to approve the renewal of auditing services agreement?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Ms. Thoreau. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C eleven point four. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thank you, Chair. This, I can't support this particular item, and the reason is, we're going out an awful long way, and it's a, it's a pretty big bucks. It's three hundred thousand dollars. And, you know, every hundred thousand just really matters as we, as we deal with our, with our, what we do for a living, and that is, we hire teachers and drivers and all that. We just need money to do it. This is going out too far for me. It's going out five years. It reminds me of one of those cost-plus construction deals where we routinely move through the same five vendors on a cost-plus basis. I, for one, started, working off the one we just went through, started my career under Browning Forms and Systems in a paper shortage. And let me tell you, we held tight all the way through. You couldn't get paper, but that's an opportunity, really, sometimes, to really hit home runs if your quantity is low. And I just throw that in. And on this one, we're going out five years. I don't want to commit to five years in this world, and I'd like to know when we did it last. And it's two hundred and ninety thousand dollars, and again, it needs a dollar sign on it. But I just want to bring it forward to the people, so the people can see it, understand it, and these things have to not go through without discussion. That last one, Ms. Thoreau, had some great, you know, comments, and I just so believe in being a steward on dollars. Five years is way too far in a volatile time, and it's too much money to be extending out like that. Thank you.
Chair, if I may, Board Member Browning, I too had a question about this, because traditionally, we do not do contracts longer than a year. And so I picked up the phone and called Attorney Powers, and he informed me, and I'm sure he can inform us as well, that Florida statute actually dictates what we have to do on these auditing contracts with the, with the vendor that we use to audit the financial position of the district. So Attorney Powers, would you mind, and perhaps even Ms. Boston Ellis could share a little bit as well, but I picked up the phone and called, because I said, do we really want to do this for five years? And I believe Florida statute actually dictates that for us.
Yes, and part of the selection process with auditors, there is specifically within statute encoded the idea that, that in order for stability and to keep costs low, that that's predicated upon longer-term contracts, because otherwise, the volatility of going year to year, it's just like with the paper market, you know? If we can lock something in, sometimes it's a good idea to lock something in, and that's why Florida statute has recognized that that is a, that's a desirable within the auditing services agreement. And I know that I've spoken, I've worked with, with the staff departments regarding this particular item, and it, it is something that, there is not a requirement for a five-year contract. However, there is encouragement to longer period of contracts. And in our case, putting it in for five years, and I'm sure Mr. Collins or Ms. Boston Ellis can correct me if anything I say is inaccurate, because they're the folks who work with us on a daily basis. But in my review, it appears that the longer term, beyond three years and into five years contract is, is not only desirable, but encouraged within the selection criteria under Florida statute. And part of that is because otherwise, when you have a services in which an auditor is, their services are retained for a period of time, you're doing better to permit those people who are already intimately familiar with that scenario, and also with the, with the topics and items that are being addressed before them in the internal workings and procedures. There is, many times, these, these contracts would otherwise have to be very front-loaded because of the fact that coming up to speed on everything they need to do happens in that first year or two. After that first year or two, then years three and four, where costs might otherwise, you know, go up, would actually decrease, because sort of the learning curve has been met. So it allows us to retain those people for that duration of time. And, you know, of course, most of the expense and the effort put out is front-end expense and effort. So retaining them beyond that initial period is keeping those good people on contract so that we can maintain a low-cost, long-term.
Thank you, Attorney. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, have the same sign.
No.
Passes unanimously.
No. Four to one.
I'm sorry, four one. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
You got that? Ms. Martinez? Okay. Four one. Sorry about that, Ms. Browning. May I have a motion to approve C eleven point five? May I have a motion to approve the request, permission to increase the estimated expenditure for bid three eight five two MF Classroom Furniture for Central Warehouse Term Contract?
So moved.
Moved by Board Member Thoreau.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member King. Mr. Browning, I understand you pulled item C eleven point five. You wish to have further discussion?
Yes, thanks. Thank you, Chair. And again, this, this falls down the same line of thought, so we can be rather quick on it. It's just an awful big increase. We've got a huge pool of money. It belongs to the people. We're the stewards. To miss by thirty-three percent, I need, I needed to come up for discussion in summary guard. This goes from one hundred and fifty thousand to two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Either we're underfiguring and going in, and then, you know, coming in later and asking for a small increase, and the two small numbers look better. I don't, it's thirty-three percent missed. That's too big for me, just to slip past me. It's an opportunity and pretty big, pretty big dollars. So I would say we need to be a little tighter in the systems. Again, not, nothing to do with the individuals. Sure, everybody's doing their best, but when you miss by thirty-three percent, that's too far off target for me. Thank you, Chair.
Ms. Thoreau.
Thank you, Chair. Again, since we have staff here, we might as well get the explanation as to why the cost increase.
Well, first of all, let me address, you keep bringing up the dollar sign on the agenda. That's a, that's a Board Docs programming thing. I put a, I put a dollar sign in front of every number I type in there, just because I feel like it needs to be there, but it doesn't show up. And that's something that Board Docs will have to address.
I appreciate that, Chair. I appreciate that. That's a, that's a biggie.
I just wanted to clarify that. That it's not us doing it.
And thank you for bringing it up, because it's not personal. It's, it's like, wow. It's, it looks like a serial number. It drives me crazy.
And so for this particular increase, request to increase expenditure, we, what we do, when we take something to y'all for approval, we look back on previous year's expenditures for the same type category commodity, and then we come up with an estimate of, okay, well, this year, we feel like we'll spend about this amount. This year, for whatever reason, we've had more purchases of furniture than, than normal. Therefore, we're just trying to be transparent and come to the board and get your approval to be able to continue to buy furniture as needed, to then sell through the warehouse.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. Ms. Martinez Lopez, can you address that issue?
Yes. For clarity purposes, with Board Docs, for the past four years, they give us an opinion on things that we would like to see them update. Every time they send that to us, we always put that as one of our recommendations, to allow us to put the dollar sign. That has not been the case. Their program software does not allow that, therefore, there is nothing that, this time that we can do to put that dollar sign in the fiscal amount.
Correct. And thank you. Thank you.
Chair. Yes. And that's super, because that's exactly what I'm looking for. So it doesn't look like our people are unconscious, putting a serial number up, or don't have the dignity of a, of a number like that. And the people have no way of knowing if it goes through a consent agreement agenda when, in fact, it's, I've never seen it before. So as these things go through, it's so helpful. I think we'll fill this entire arena. That would be my desire, this auditorium, with our bosses out there, the general public.
Any further discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, have the same sign?
No.
Motion passes four to one. May I have a motion to approve the following cash or tangible donations that have a total value of twenty-one thousand, six hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-eight cents. One thousand dollars to Bellevue Santos Elementary School from Especare Bellevue LLC. Four thousand dollars to Donnellan Middle School from Marion County Hospital District. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Forest High School from their business partner, Ray Mears Realtor via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Fort King Middle School from their business partner, Ray Mears Realtor via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Lake Ware High School from their business partner, Ray Mears Realtor via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Lake Ware Middle School from their business partner, Ray Mears Realtor via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Two thousand one hundred eighteen dollars and thirty-eight cents to Iciola Middle School from Iciola Middle School PTO. Two thousand five hundred dollars to Romeo Elementary School from their business partner, the Colton Foundation, in court via the Public Education Foundation of Marion County. Two thousand dollars to Saddlewood Elementary School from I Girl, I Core, Palook, Bak. Y'all have to bear with me on that one. Polo Bukkako and Daria Reebstevia. And that's to Saddlewood. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell.
Second.
Seconded by Board Member Thoreau. Any discussion? All in favor signify by aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, have the same sign. Thank you. Thank you. Ms. King, can you give us our thank you tonight?
I sure can. On behalf of the Marion County School Board, thank you so much for your generous donations. Without your help, our schools would not be able to have the wonderful items that you have provided, or the monetary items. So again, thank you so much for graciously giving to our schools.
Thank you. The following administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two, at nine AM. Purpose of the special work session is to discuss quarterly data review, K-12 mathematics instructional material adoption, and Guardian Program. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for March third, twenty twenty-two, at nine AM. The purpose of this special work session is to discuss annual reports by charter schools, annual investment reports, and fiscal year twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-two budget update as of December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, and accelerated academy. Before addressing expulsion matters, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through January twenty-one, twenty-two. Ms. Martinez Lopez, are there any parents who haven't submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
We need to do, give overboard comments.
That's, oh, I'm sorry.
No, I don't know that it was in the script, but.
It's not there. Okay. I apologize. I'm moving fast. This is time to go home. Comments? Ms. Martinez Lopez, you have anything?
Board members, your program, your program for the southeastern livestock is located in your mailboxes. They've been placed there this evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Superintendent?
Thank you, Chair Cummings. Members of the board, again, we started our evening with our outstanding scholars and educators, and they were so articulate in sharing the great work and the great needs that we have, and so appreciate them. And highlighting, again, we've talked about, it's National School Counseling Week, and how important all of these folks are to our students, and how much we need them. Theme this, this week is Better Together. I think that's very appropriate. And again, Black History Month, which we kicked off our meeting with, the work continues, and thank you for your support of the Commissioner of Education's African-American History Task Force, and the work that has occurred in the district. So First Lady DeSantis's theme is celebrating African-American contributions to Florida's history. And in addition to what you heard tonight, there are events and recognitions happening throughout our schools. So I want to thank the team for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Attorney Powers?
Yes, Chair Cummings. I do have an item, a request for attorney-client session. Board members, I am notifying you that Attorney Suzanne Green, or designee of the Bice Cole Law Firm... has informed me that advice is needed regarding case number two thousand sixteen, one seven seven zero dash CA, styled Scott Frank versus the School Board of Marion County. Pursuant to section two eighty-six point oh one one Florida statute, known as the Government and the Sunshine Act, on behalf of Attorney Green, I am requesting an attorney-client session with the board for the purpose of discussing the evaluation and/or compromise of said claim. I have asked the board's clerk to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this attorney-client session and the names of the persons attending to be published. It is suggested that the attorney-client session be held at eleven o'clock AM during a recess of the February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two administrative briefing and work session scheduled or as soon thereafter as may be heard. Because we do have an alternate, we also have another attorney-client session on the same date. As required by this statute, only the following individuals would be present. Eric Cummings, Board Chair, Allison Campbell, Vice Chair, Nancy Thoreau, School Board Member, Don Browning, School Board Member, Kelly King, School Board Member, Superintendent Diane Gullett, Jeremy Powers, School Board Attorney, and Suzanne Green, Esquire, or her designee of the Vice Cole Law Firm. I have asked a court reporter to record the session, also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of any litigation and/or settlement of all claims arising out of this incident, the transcript will be made public record.
I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to section two eight six point oh one one Florida statute to discuss the pending claim. If there are no objections, the attorney-client session should occur during a recess of the February seventeenth, twenty twenty-two administrative briefing and work session starting at eleven o'clock AM or as soon thereafter as the matter may be heard. Thank you. And for the record, we have one already scheduled that day.
That is correct. We also have TCS versus SB risk management claim. And that is to be, we've scheduled at the same time, so we will hold one. Then the parties from one will vacate the room and hold the second.
Thank you. Ms. Thoreau.
Just a question regarding the schedule. Typically, our work sessions go way past eleven o'clock and breaking in the middle of an important conversation and leaving and then coming back, especially if there's people that want to speak. Just wondering the rest of the board's thoughts on that, that knowing us as we know us, to try to schedule a court reporter that we know we need to pay as soon as the time begins, that we might want to look at a little bit later in the day than eleven o'clock. I just wonder everyone else's feelings on that.
My thoughts are if we break at eleven, the hard stop, we're only paying when the court reporter comes. So if they show up at eleven, we stop at eleven, then they can come and go. And then if we aren't sure and we're like, oh, we ran late till three o'clock, but they've been sitting there since two, then that really could cost us, in my opinion, that could cost us more, if that makes sense, if we made that later. So it's inconvenient, in my mind, it's inconvenient to break at eleven, but it fiscally makes sense to have the court reporter here at eleven us break and knowing that exact time rather than us being great. Because we don't know what time our meetings end. Does that make sense?
It does. I agree one hundred percent that we need a hard start time for the court reporter because, you know, the clock starts ticking right then. I was just wondering if it would be more workable considering our work sessions are public meetings and people do want to come and share and not have to wait, you know, an hour or whatever while we break at eleven, knowing full well chances of us being done by eleven are pretty much next to none. So having them scheduled for two, and at least at that point, maybe we'll only have one thing left on the agenda and the agenda could be scheduled in a way that maybe the items that would likely generate the least amount of discussion as best we can predict would be later in the day. You know, it's just, I felt like it was awkward and I felt bad for the people that came that wanted to speak the last time this happened. So that's why I brought it up. I mean, I clear my schedule on work session days because I don't, it's just better not to stress myself out because you never know when we're gonna end.
Chair?
Yes, sir.
Yes. Good points all. I like the sound of that. It's good points. The session also, it's hard to predict the time and, you know, how long things are going to take. And it's close to lunch. Well, probably, I don't know, we got two of them, so it's sort of like an early lunch break kind of thing. So I'm comfortable with it. I appreciate the concerns and comments by Board Member Thoreau because, yeah, if you're right in the middle of something and then they break it, you know, like for this, it is trying. But the discussion and the explanations, I think, help general public know this is also a very important, these are very important issues when they get to this stage. So important, important, and then important. So we just schedule them in. So thank you.
Can we then have it on the agenda that we will break at that time so that people that are coming that may want to speak will be able to plan accordingly? That's my only thing.
Yes.
Last thing we want to do is have people walk out disgruntled because they didn't get a chance to make their comments. They had to get to work.
We can definitely, Superintendent, make sure that's on the agenda, that there be a hard break at eleven o'clock for those sessions, those attorney-client sessions. We also run into the issue of advertising, making sure that we have to have them advertise in a timely manner. So that's kind of why we do it that way.
And Chair, if we are intending also to eat that during that day, and I don't know that we are, it all depends on how the day goes, but I would recommend to Ms. Thoreau's point that we get it all done during that timeframe. So we're not coming in for thirty minutes and then breaking again for lunch or, you know, whatever might happen. So if we can get it all taken care of at the same time. So hopefully we be back in and finish.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anything else, Attorney?
No, sir. Thank you.
Ms. King.
All right. Well, I first would like to begin thanking our school counselors as it is School Counselor Week. And there has been a lot of discussion with our students and how this year seems maybe harder than last year. And we're just grateful for each and every one of you. And actually, I know that the school board was even advocating for the counselors. I think Ms. Thoreau alluded to it a little bit earlier and I have a feeling she'll probably even talk about it maybe later because she did a great job speaking to our legislators about that. Also, I would like to thank our board. As my tenure on this board this past week up in Tallahassee was the first time, I believe, all five of us were up in Tallahassee together to speak to our legislators. And our legislators were kind enough to meet face-to-face with us. And there was some pretty good discussion and we had great discussion about BPK and the pay. We had also good discussion about last year with the teacher pay, how we want, you know, we were grateful for Governor DeSantis to give us money that we could pay our new teachers. We're not quite at the goal that we want to be, but that is our goal. And there was also discussion to share our concerns and our legislators were concerned too, that I believe they heard our pleas that we know and understand and we advocate for our veteran teachers. We understand that it is important that you guys get the pay raise that you deserve. So please understand that this board did advocate for our teachers last week, among other things. COVID, I know it was mentioned earlier today and I believe we were going to maybe have a meeting. What's gonna happen with that? Because I know there are some concerns that probably need to be addressed with COVID and pay leave. You're gonna come with that? Okay, because that was one of my concerns too. Is that gonna, well, we'll just get to it when you come, when your turn comes to talk.
We can talk about it now. Basically, and that would just ease some of my comments at the end. We had the resolution that we had in place that sunsetted a few, a couple of days ago at the end of January twenty-ninth that appears to leave our staff unprotected because there's some language in there that stated something about these people must be disciplined or must up to termination. So it leaves our folk uncovered. So looking into those issues, I reached out to the Superintendent, reached out to Ms. Oliver and others to get some clarity on that and to make sure that we are taking care of our folk. And so I asked Ms. Oliver, she's here today, to kind of come and help us with that. Superintendent, did you want to say anything before she come?
No, thank you, Ms. Oliver. Thank you.
I think we got a fix, have a fix.
Good evening again. Yes, as you stated, Resolution twenty-one ten did expire on January twenty-nine, twenty twenty-two. This resolution did provide ten uncompensated days of leave for COVID reasons only for our employees. And this leave served to protect our employees as they were out with uncompensated leave. Because it has expired, it is important to put something in place that can allow employees to be out for COVID reasons without repercussions. And I did want to remind you, I think Chair Cummings did say something about the board policy that requires some sort of disciplinary action. That is Board Policy six point five one one. And it does say, any employee absent from duty without leave shall be subject to termination. School Board Policy six point five oh two C also says, leave in excess of ten consecutive uncompensated days require approval by the school board. So we certainly have our teleworking in place for people that are out for COVID reasons only. But as for the resolution, it has expired and these board policies are in place. I think we are in need of some sort of provision that just allows us to allow employees to be out to take care of themselves and their family when it comes to COVID nineteen without the fear of any repercussions.
Thank you. It kind of took away any discretion from the district because the language pretty much said must or shall be. Attorney, I talked to Attorney Powers on some of that. Hey, can you give us a little bit more, Attorney Powers, on that? Clarion in there?
Yes, sir. Board Policy six point five four nine indicates that employees, if they go beyond and expend all of their accrued sick leave, that, and this is already current. Sorry.
Turn your mic to you.
Already current board policy.
It's a new day.
The current board policy indicates that if anyone has reached the end of their accrued sick leave, that they may then, and this has been the case in the past and is the case right now currently, that they may request uncompensated leave from the Superintendent or her designee for additional uncompensated sick leave up to ten days. And so we had codified that within the language of the resolution, but that's already in existence. Now, beyond that, if someone is going to utilize more than ten days of uncompensated leave, which is all that the resolution granted anyway, then they would need to have, the board would need to approve that request, in which case that would need to be expedited from staff for the board to approve that request. Now, in the future, we may choose to alter or change that in such a way that we have a additional time beyond ten days or that we wish to streamline that process and allow the Superintendent to, you know, additional authority. That's completely within the purview of the board. As of now, there's really not much difference between what the resolution, the language under the resolution over the last ninety days and what current board policy allows, which is that if someone has expended all of their sick leave, they may request, provided that under six point five four nine, they indicate that it's a request for uncompensated leave, they may request additional sick leave of up to ten days. If it's going to extend beyond all of their accrued leave and then beyond the ten days, then at that point, it's subject to board approval. And of course, this would also envision the scenario in which there is a, you know, someone who is going to be chronically absent or for long-term periods way beyond ten days that probably should require board approval for something like that. And that was already envisioned under the resolution as it was twenty-one ten. So that's sort of historically where we are with this. And the board may, in a future work session, choose to discuss and further alter their policies or create an additional resolution or whatever the case may be. But, and certainly that is something that we've already begun to review within the Neola processes and it's been addressed there with our new updates as well. But this being something that's specifically come to our attention, it may be that the board wishes to address something in the interim. At this point, my recommendation is, I believe the language is clear here, that they are permitted to take the additional ten days of uncompensated leave just as they would under the resolution, so long as they have made, you know, they've applied to the Superintendent or her designee. And then beyond that period of time, it requires board approval. And if it is not with board approval, then at that point, there would be, you know, consequences.
Can I speak to that?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Now that I have a little bit better understanding, I have a great concern that has just actually come to my attention this afternoon. And unfortunately, COVID hits families different than others. And for some and most, hopefully you get over well. And others, you know, loved ones have poor outcomes and they need family support. That may be in or out of state, even for young babies that need assistance. And the grandmother who may have been in our system for many, many, many years is asking to take a leave of absence and it's being denied that. And she's concerned that she's going to have to quit her job in order to take care of her family. And my thoughts are family first. And I don't understand why we would put any of our employees in that predicament. They should never, ever have to choose between their family and their job, especially if they're willing to come back. So I think that this is just probably one scenario. Unfortunately, I hate to think that there could be, you know, more like that. But I think as a board, we need to protect our employees in this time. So I don't know if what we could do could.
Ms. King, you're absolutely right. I think you all got the notice about us having a special meeting. And that's exactly what this was about, protecting our staff. But the rules said that we can bring it up tonight. And that's why we're talking about it now, because we have to protect our people and make sure that they're not being disciplined for being sick.
Correct.
Or losing their job because they're being sick. They got sick and they got COVID. We have to be responsible with this. And I'm getting the same type of emails that you guys are getting concerning the same issue. I'm sure you guys are getting those emails as well. So Ms. Campbell?
Chair, I believe there's a greater conversation here. And, you know, when I think back to whenever we had the original or the most recent resolution, I guess you could say, and we were going to even the ten days uncompensated and so forth. I mean, we were all in a hopeful position that COVID was going to be on its way out and we weren't going to have extended leaves and we weren't going to have all of these kinds of things. And, I mean, yes, talking about getting emails, I have email from a teacher who had to be out with sick children, first-year teacher, had to be out with sick children, who is concerned now, certainly if another member of her family gets ill or what have you, but also. what have you, but also that teacher did what was best for students and was participating in Microsoft Teams meetings and different things like that, preparing her lesson plans and and working, but didn't get paid for it. Because teleworking doesn't work for a teacher, because they're not in the classroom. At least this was the way this worked for this particular teacher. Perhaps I need to talk directly to you, Ms. Oliver, um because this particular teacher did not get paid. And possibly it's because it was a first-year teacher and maybe it was like day six or something like that. And and so uh she had already used all of her leave, perhaps. Regardless, it doesn't matter on that one particular instance, uh but that's just one of many, because there we've all been getting emails from veteran teachers, from from others, and we all knew teachers, a lot of new employees that um have had to be out longer. And so I I think there's a greater conversation. Again, we were all so hopeful. A lot of the folks that I've heard from that are having to use their time now, didn't use it the first semester whenever we had it available. And so it's like, I never even used it, and now it's not even available to me any longer because that resolution is so, I mean, I don't know how we single that out. Again, I I also am aware that we did have some offenders, and and I don't want to regulate for the offenders, but but I do know that there were some of those that every time we would put forth another resolution, oh, then I was a recent contact. And so we did have some of those, but uh I would say probably those are a little more few and far between than we might acknowledge. My hope is that that's the case. So I am completely open for us revisiting this conversation entirely. Not just the ten days uncompensated, I may be the only board member here uh that wants to revisit this, but I I believe if we have employees that are trying to do what's best for students, in addition to doing what's best for their families, then we need to ensure that not only they're not receiving disciplinary action for taking care of their families, um but also that they're getting paid for the work that they that they're doing and and that they don't need to worry about uh first-year employees worrying about running out of their sick time and then having to take time unpaid and and all of that. So I'm I'm open to revisiting the whole conversation.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you. I I too, uh Ms. King, uh your your uh comments are, I think, right on target there, uh as well as Ms. Campbell, that uh uh in terms of the content, the uh for me, I I'm real, real concerned that we keep, we stay over in the process side, uh not the policy side, but the process side, so it isn't all for one and one for all. If we do something unique because of unique circumstances and situations, then that's the way it is. And I would like to get there if we can, the grandmother, that type of thing, unique situations that we haven't suddenly opened the floodgates to uh just all sorts of carrying on and 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 more than we can actually handle, quite frankly, uh uh from a dollar point of view. So, yes, I I I look at it, I'm, you know, my heart goes out, uh what the Chair was just saying, I concur. But we've got to not be in an adversarial position where, God, we got to get tough with this, oh, sorry, grandmother, you know, I just hate that. And I'd like unique, it's it's unique situations are unique and especially, that's why we have the superintendent, and it's i- if we can, if we can move over in that direction, she can make judgment calls. She knows what's what's uh what's popping, and if it really got bad, it could come to the uh to the board. So that's sort of the way I'd like to see it, because we've got the, we've got the personnel and the power and the energy and the and the and intelligence to handle these unique situations, but let's don't just make it universal because the situations are not universal. So I don't know if that if that uh gets to the gets to the crux of fairness, decency, and and I think we are past uh the COVID situation, but we are not uh past the havoc it 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 brought on so many people, and a lot of things are upside down. Uh and we probably got to go through a four or five years past and before all that stuff settles out. Thank you, Chair.
Uh Policy six point five four nine, um Section Four says, an employee who has used all accrued sick leave, and this is where we are, why Ms. our attorney is saying we don't really have to change the language, an employee has used all accrued sick leave but is otherwise entitled to sick leave, may request and may be granted sick leave without pay. The claim for such sick leave shall clearly state that the leave is without compensation. Now, there's some other stipulations and things in there. Attorney, go ahead, you were about to say-
Yes, sir. And and to get the full context of this, um that allows that allows someone to request additional accrued sick leave or additional sick leave without pay beyond what their accrued pay or their accrued sick leave is. However, what the what the potential difficulty is, is that Section Five directly under that says, an employee requesting leave for an extended illness must apply for a medical leave of absence following district person uh protocol. Now, as Ms. Oliver has explained to me, getting that approval is is a separate issue for the long term, the what happens beyond the ten days, because some, uh as I understand, their doctors have been unwilling to sign off on on that being uh approved. Can you speak to that? Okay. Nope. And while while we're working on that, let me just, let me finalize that thought so I tell you where we're going here. We've got, so the employee may request that additional uh leave beyond the ten days, okay? And we don't want to make it bureaucratic for them or anything, but that's 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 where we uh where we go. If if they've used up their accrued sick leave, then at that point, they can request additional um ten days uh from the superintendent or her designee. However, Board Policy six point five oh two, if you read it in conjunction, indicates that the following types of leave require approval of the school board. And one of those is Items One C, leave in excess of ten consecutive uncompensated days. So, once the ten days that that is is gone of uncompensated time, at that point, currently, it would require Board approval. And um certainly, those are, again, those things that that may be expedited so that the board can can approve those or can give consensus as to a blanket approval, whatever they, whatever you wish to do, we can re, we can address and revisit quickly. However, the process that has, and this isn't unique to COVID, this can be for other illnesses as well. If someone has multiple and repeated um uh doctor's appointments or or they're out for repeated illnesses that are non-COVID, they would be in exactly the same situation as as a COVID-related situation. The difference is, um, you know, it's actually even still a similarity. With some of these, people have to take care of their family, uh their 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 child and then perhaps their spouse and then perhaps another family caregiver or member. And so those are, those have been, I think, brought to the forefront by COVID. It's not that it's unique to COVID. The process of using up your accrued sick leave, then going to ten days of uncompensated leave with approval, and then going for um Board approval beyond that, uh the issue of uh of, let me see here, where is this section on additional leave? Give me one second here, because I want to make sure that I'm speaking directly as to as it says here. Uh extended illness applying for a medical leave of absence following district protocol. That's a section that I'd like for Ms. Oliver to speak to, because that would bypass the 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 ten-day issue. However, as I understand it, it's difficult to get approval for that particular type of of leave.
Correct. Thank you so much. So there are many cases where employees are out past ten consecutive days. There are cases where the COVID symptoms hang on. However, it doesn't create what a doctor would call a serious health condition. So the serious health condition is what is absolutely required for the uh FMLA, which is um Family Medical Leave Act. That is twelve weeks of job-protected leave and for for any serious health condition. When people get COVID, many times they're back well before the ten days with our new quarantine guidelines. But there are certainly times where they have to be out more than ten days, but a physician simply will not call it a serious health condition. Therefore, they're stuck uh between a rock and a hard place in a way. The ten uncompensated compensated days are up. They cannot qualify for FMLA or district medical leave. So we are stuck at that point with um needing leave approved beyond ten uncompensated consecutive days, because as six point five oh two points out, that type of leave is required by school board approval. So if there's, there could be a provision that would allow something like that, or these things would have to come to the board for approval, according to this language.
Yes, sir.
Yes. I really, the last thing I want to do is uh hamstring the uh really competent service by our speaker here. You're you you do a great job and and that's, it it's critically important. And and I I think that the answer is over directing it to the superintendent to get these little, these, and you you bring it up and it's great. Uh we just, you've got a little problem, we need a decision, we have a superintendent, boom, it goes over there and gets handled, it's not board material at that point. These these are little cracks in the the medical protocol, for example. I I am one hundred percent in favor of that. The superintendent then can bring it to the board if if she has the discussion to do that, if she needs to. And and I I I just believe that handles your issue with the grandmother, it handles your issue in in being a competent negotiator, and we are not in an adversarial position, and it it lets us utilize our superintendent. So, thank you, Chair.
I'm I'm not too sure.
Um I I should speak to that. There's um essentially what that would be doing, unless we actually rewrite policy, which is certainly one option, um would be that the board would be designating its authority under One C specifically, not necessarily all of these others, but leave in excess of ten consecutive uncompensated days. The board would be delegating its responsibility um there to operations, to the superintendent to do that. And, you know, with consensus of the board, I I think you could. I don't think it's a non-delegable duty, but the question is, is that that that's there as a check and balance so that the board is able to
Correct.
make that determination. And and so that may not be something that operations wishes to take on as its separate role. Now, I will also just, to maybe hopefully elucidate things a little bit, the approval of leaves, the following types of leaves require approval of the school board. One of them, for example, is medical leave, including maternity leave, um military leave in excess of thirty calendar days of active duty, professional leave, family FMLA, uh charter leave instructional, those are all different things that require you to approve those, the 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 school board, not the superintendent. And so currently, you, my understanding is you get some sort of a uh list from time to time of these sorts of leaves have been requested and are they approved? And I think that is a process that's generally well streamlined to the to date. And so if we did not, if if the board chose not to delegate it to operations or if operations was unwilling to accept that kind of designation, then um it would essentially go back into this mix, just like an approval for maternity leave would, or an approval for military leave in excess of thirty days of active duty. So it would still come back before the board to approve. So once the ten days, if someone's requests, if someone requests the ten days from the superintendent and the superintendent grants that leave request or or her designee, then at that point, uh if if there's even a possibility or a probability that it's going to extend well beyond that, then it requires that it be placed as an attorney leave request or military leave request or anything else for the board to lay eyes on it and say, we concur. So um I'm open for you all to discuss those factors. I it's it's your role to determine what you want to do, certainly.
I I just believe that we're at a place where we need to um protect our employees that are in danger of losing their job. They don't want to leave, and I, if we could just figure out a way to have the right language should in emergency, and I'm not saying it's for everyone, but I do know that there are some extreme circumstances that need to be addressed. And um I I do like the idea of maybe if it is designated, then the board can approve it at some point. I just would like to see us not, it not being approved or the employee is concerned about losing their job before it makes it to us. So how could we word that, if that makes sense? Like, what could we actually do to make that happen? And I don't know, Jacey, I know you're on the spot, I don't know if you have a suggestion or an idea in this or-
So you're saying have language that would allow discretion but would still come to the board for approval um at a later date? Is that what you said?
Correct, if that makes sense, because that's kind of what we do with some other things, right? It happens and then, you know, they're on their leave before it sometimes actually makes it to us, correct?
That is correct, that is correct.
So is there a way we could put language in there or something to address that? Because when originally when that policy was made, it was before COVID and other things, and now we just have different, you know, circumstances, so.
We're we're in the process right now of looking at policy, and I think this is one of the policies that has to be reviewed. Am I, am I on the right page, y'all?
You are, you are. We modified some of the sick leave policies um and other leave policies to allow for a little bit more discretion, and um I I believe you'll be reviewing those in future Neola meetings.
So what would work now, since we can't change policy in the middle of the river, what would be the the most prudent thing to do to protect our people? We we say we care about them, this is an opportunity for us to show that we care about them beyond just saying it. So what can we do in the now? Um I think Ms. King is on the right page and think the other board members are looking at the same thing. What can we do now?
I believe that in talking with Attorney Powers earlier, um and in thinking back to when we did the COVID vaccination bonus, um we've done a couple of things so far to put things into place um that Board Policy wouldn't necessarily allow for. One was the resolution, we have done several of those. Another for the COVID vaccination bonus was simply a best practice that outlined the language, and then it was approved in that respect. So I could have further conversation with Attorney Powers and lean on his knowledge, um his legal knowledge, and we could put together some language that would allow for uh discretion at the superintendent and designee level, um putting in to place some procedures to protect our employees so that they're not having to receive any kind of retribution or discipline um for being out or have to feel like they need to leave their job. Um and then how that could be placed um on a board packet is what I think I'm hearing for future approval. I don't know if that would be on a monthly basis.
Because that's what it sounds like, um we're talking about a board packet um coming forth, and we see those all the time. There are there are there are the personnel section where we approve those and that persons, uh we approve them to come back and we approve them to go out. And we we do those all the time, so is that the, is that the cleanest and the the most prudent way to get it done? Let me ask that.
Well, it's eight thirty seven at night, so I'm not, I'm not positive it's the cleanest. How about we go back, we use the team, um include, of course, Attorney Powers, he's always part of that team, and then make some very quick recommendations back to you.
Okay. So can we say tonight? So can we say tonight that, and for clarity sakes, that our staff is not going to get disciplined?
If I may interject there, I think that that is appropriate for this board, to say that as a matter of board consensus, if there is board consensus here, that the board is, by consensus, suspending enforcement of that portion of its policy...
That's where I'm going.
Pending further action taken.
That's where I'm going.
And we don't, if that becomes a resolution, or if it becomes a policy change, then that's fine. I mean, the purpose of this is not only to provide, is not only to provide accountability, but I don't think that, that, I don't think the board is ever going to be hamstrung by its own rules in not being able to do the right and correct thing. And I don't think that's what is envisioned in any of these policies here either. So if the board chooses to indicate to its personnel, and with input of staff and superintendent and your attorney, that it wishes to suspend enforcement of that provision regarding discipline, then for this foreseeable future, until this is resolved in another manner, and we can't say exactly what that manner will be tonight, because this is something that requires more discussion. There are unintended consequences for everything we do, and so we have to think through these things carefully, and, you know, tell you it's most prudent right now, but it might not be taking into account something else that could come down the road, so...
And that's where I'm going, Attorney Powers, that this board tonight make a decision to suspend that punitive part of that policy, or whatever it is, and then any people, any staff that have already been affected by that, who have been disciplined in the past few months in regards to this, because of this unintended consequence. And then that would give the team opportunity to bring something back to us very quickly, so that we can get this fixed. Because we don't want to cause any angst or unnecessary, I bless you, unnecessary anxiety on our staff, because they got sick. Mr. Browning?
Yes, thank you. Very quickly, I would need solid assurance, Ms. Oliver, that this is not going to open the floodgates and put you in a state of jeopardy, because we have to, we have to handle both sides of every equation. And are you comfortable with the discussion this far? And are you being put in a tenable position where you, or in a position where you can actually function properly in representing the district?
Thank you for that. I do think that certainly when we set parameters, we can operate efficiently, and I think that will not put my team in a precarious position. If we don't outline what these provisions are for, and then it becomes extensive to any other case, I think that would be problematic. But I think we can be very clear in what we're outlining.
Okay, thank you.
In that case, I'm...
And Board Member Browning, you weren't here, you were on the board at the time, but when COVID first hit, Ms. Browning, Ms. Oliver and I and some others sat down and started these initial resolutions. I'm competent, fully competent, that they're going to bring back a good resolution, or whatever it is, that's going to make sure that our people are taken care of, and that, so I'm sure of that.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Yes. And the district being well taken care of.
Board Member Thor.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we want to provide relief, we want to provide reassurance, certainly grace and compassion. This has been a very unique time. I am interested in our superintendent's input on this one.
Thank you. Board Member Thrower, I support this. We've had an extended conversation, and that's why we had some proposed language we're bringing for the Neola review, to protect our employees. There is, there's always going to be a concern, I think as Attorney Powers stated, with unintended consequences. But I think if we're really clear on language in the suspension of the enforcement of the policy regarding provisions related to COVID-19, I think that that can clearly be followed. But I do think we need to protect our employees. I think that when that policy was written, no one even anticipated a pandemic. And so, and we do have employees who have family members, and multiple family members that are having to attend to them. And I think we do need to put family first. We, our strategic plan is very clear about taking care of our employees. And we take care of our employees, we take care of our children. So anything that we can do to support that and clarity of language is important, and appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Oliver.
If the board is seeking consensus, I mean, if the board is granting consensus to suspend that enforcement provision, I think that taking into account what your discussion has been here tonight, and what the superintendent's discussion was just then, that it is not an overall suspension on Item 1 of 6.502, which is leave in excess of 10 consecutive days needing to be approved, but specifically as pertains to COVID-related issues. So that would encompass, you know, a number of potential scenarios, but it also doesn't sort of throw the baby out with the bathwater, so to speak, in which we just are not having enforcement of any 10-day uncompensated leave. So this is specifically directed toward COVID and COVID-related, and we've got some experience already in what that means, because it doesn't mean somebody needs a positive or negative test at a particular time, because there can be other reasons for COVID-related leave beyond you yourself being sick, and beyond even a family member being sick. It may be because of a quarantine scenario, or who knows? So there's a number. But as relates to the COVID-19-related issues, then we would suspend enforcement of the discipline provision that would otherwise be in yet a third section of the, of board policy. So these policies all interact, and we want to make sure that we have each of those interactions considered.
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Thor.
Wait, I have a more thing, because we got on that, and mine will be short and sweet. I just want to thank Mr. Collins. Oh, wait, were you talking about this? Oh, I thought you were moving to board comments, sorry. Sorry. You were working ahead.
Are you ready to go home? I know. Go ahead, Ms. Thor.
Thank you. I'm fine, I'm comfortable, I'm ready.
Yeah, I'm fine, I'm comfortable, I'm ready.
So are we, do we have consensus, or do we need to vote on this? Do we need to...
We should not vote at this point regarding this issue, so...
So for the record, we do have a consensus that we will suspend the enforcement...
A unanimous consensus, because that's what consensus means, as Board Member Browning tells us.
Mr. Chair, if I may. Thank you, thank you, sir. For clarity, the suspension of policy number...
It's not, and that's as we discussed, this is 6.502, Section 1C, is leave in excess of 10 consecutive uncompensated days. Now here, I really do not wish to overcomplicate this. However, 6.549 is the policy regarding sick leave, that says that someone can request up to 10 additional uncompensated days. That then leads us to Step 2, which is 6.502, and that says that if there's going to be leave beyond that 10 consecutive uncompensated days, that it requires board approval. Then the third policy, can you give me the policy number again? I'm sorry. The policy that speaks to shall discipline?
6.511.
6.511 is then the enforcement mechanism provision that says that the staff shall take action if that is not followed appropriately. So it would actually be that it would be, it would be suspension of enforcement action under 6.511 regarding specifically COVID-related leave. And let me, let me phone a friend and ask whether that seems to clarify it from your mind, in your mind?
That does. I think if we are suspending that portion, number one, of 6.511, I believe that will give us the language that we need to not move forward with any kind of action against the employee for being out for COVID reasons.
So do we have, do we have a mechanism to make sure that if anybody has been caught in that situation, that we can make them whole? Because...
We certainly do. I do not know of any case where any disciplinary action has been given for someone being out for COVID reasons.
Okay.
But if that comes to my attention, and we can certainly make sure that that is retracted, if that has happened.
Thank you.
And I will indicate also that that would require that they had exhausted their options, you know, in going, I mean, we, going through the process that would be requested, requesting that leave, so those should be a known quantity, there should be few or zero...
But they may not have known that they could have requested that at the time, based on the resolutions that we had in place. That's why I keep asking, making sure that those folk that may have gotten captured are able to be made whole going forward. I think we'll be okay once we get these things in place, but those people that got caught up in this unintended situation should not be penalized based on this, what we got in place already.
Agreed. And our office has not taken any action in that respect. We can certainly make sure that supervisors have not. If they have, it hasn't come to my attention or my office's attention.
So that gives our supervisors some directions, because a lot of them have reached out to me and said, "Do I really have to do this to this person?" And so I know it's out there, so we just want to make those folk whole.
Absolutely.
So we do have consensus, we do have consensus, Ms. Oliver.
We do. Thank you, sir, thank you, sir. I want to make one comment about something I said earlier. I did say, since you were wanting to possibly see those leaves that we're going to bring to you if that gets approved, you wanted to see them so that they could be board-approved at a certain point. I wanted to say, and I had forgotten for a moment, that we had actually removed the regular leaves of absences off of the board packet. We used to put FMLA leaves, district medical leaves, on the board packet after conversation. We removed those because it gave anyone who was looking at the packet the knowledge that an employee had a medical condition. So if we then place COVID-type leave on the board packet, that might give an unintended consequence of going right back where we were, and then maybe even worse for COVID purposes. So I just did want to say that. So if I don't bring that to you in a recommendation after we discuss with the team, you'll know why. We'll find it, we can find a different way.
Thank you for clarifying that. You know, we forget.
And I forgot.
You live and breathe it every day.
It's an unintended consequence.
Yeah, that was an unintended one, so we, I appreciate your expertise and your helping guide us through this, and I know you well enough to know that you always want what's best for our employees also, so thank you so much.
Thank you, absolutely.
Thanks, Chair.
The answer to this may be no, but could we treat those the same way we do as our expulsions, where we have the entire packet as a private item that only the board sees? The answer may be no, I don't know that that's possible, but if that's something we could, because that's medical information that would be private, I don't know the answer to that. And you don't have to give us the answer now, but to explore it.
Right, I'll, I'll pass on that, because the fact is, to some degree, anything submitted to the board is going to be public record unless it meets a specific exemption as personnel. And some items that you would think of as being personnel items are not necessarily personnel items if they're, if individual identifiers are removed. So there are, there are some issues I'd want to, I'd want to look into before commenting further on that.
And also, I want us to be careful too, that we're not going to create a lot of extra work for J.C. and her department either, because we know when there's a pop, when those numbers rise, it's chaotic. And so I want us to also be respectful of that also.
So that just kind of led me to something. So current, currently, or we're kind of proposing that the superintendent or their designee has the ability to grant leave without pay, uncompensated leave, correct?
For up to 10 additional days, and beyond that would require board approval. However, that is something that currently, what we have said is that any employee who is getting, who is requesting more than additional leave, if they go beyond the 10 days...
They have to.
Then it requires either, you know, moving into that FMLA time, or something like that, which we've indicated, again, is probably impossible to get in some instances for COVID-related issues, because the doctors just won't sign off on it that way. However, we would be saying that we're not, if someone inadvertently, in doing it this way, run past that 10 consecutive uncompensated days, we're going to take the time to seek board approval for that person for, to have ongoing and continued uncompensated days. However, there will be no disciplinary enforcement regarding if someone goes beyond that time while we're trying to get board approval, or what are those processes? It falls to their benefit instead of against them.
I think I'm clear. I want to just see what the team bring back to us. As long as our folk know that they are not going to be, they don't have to worry about being disciplined right now about this until we get this all worked out. And we're going to take care of our people, we're going to take care of our people. So thank you. Ms. Oliver, are you clear on what you need to get done?
I am, that was my exact question, so thank you for clarifying that. Do we agree the language allows the superintendent to approve up to 10 uncompensated days for COVID purposes? And we are clear about that, that's what I'm hearing. So my team, we will go forward and work on bringing language about those absences that extend beyond the 10 days uncompensated consecutive days that the superintendent, at her discretion, can approve. But those, so those people that extend beyond the 10 days but cannot apply for FMLA or district medical leave due to the nature of it not being a serious medical condition. Or with district medical leave, that is only for an employee's personal medical, not for a child or anyone else. So for situations like that, where these instances are falling through the cracks, we can, we can look at that and what, and what we choose to do as a team, and bring that to you, and then have more conversation.
Thank you.
Thank you, very much.
Thank you. Ms. King?
Yeah, again, thank you, Ms. Oliver. And I also want to thank Mr. Collins tonight on the spot. He was asked numerous questions, and throughout the years, I've had the opportunity to work with him, and he's always been very helpful. I know he's very, very careful and does his due diligence on all of his work, and I just wanted to personally thank him for that. And that's all I had this evening, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. King. Ms. Thor?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the trip to Tallahassee this year had a new vibe to it, I would say. I feel like there's just a lot of relief in all of us, that we made it this far, and that we actually got to be together, all together again this year. It was great to have all five of us together. It was great that all five of our, all of our senators and our representatives, which equals five, all were able to prioritize their time to spend time with us. And that just really makes a big difference. And I can't help but think that part of that may be because our vice chair's outreach. Thank you, Board Member Campbell, for making those direct invitations to Representative McLean. Representative Hinson came and visited schools. Representative Harding came and visited one of our most unique schools, which is Hillcrest School. I think that it gave them the opportunity to see the spectrum of students that we serve. Senator Baxley has visited our district many different times, Senator Perry as well. In fact, they requested the opportunity to get on the school district calendar for different events that are going on, especially if they're events, of course, that are near and dear to their heart, that they helped, you know, bring forward. Music education, especially in young children, is very near and dear to Senator Perry's heart. So we need to make sure he gets to see the steel drums next time that's happening at Oak Crest. And just all of those little... examples is, is part of the relationship building. So I felt like it was, like Board Member King said, that, that we really did get heard and it was a really nice collaboration. And, and I got the sense that they were pretty amazed and pretty thankful at, at what we've been able to do as a district, to continue to keep schools open and comply with the governor's orders and comply with the emergency orders and, and try to figure out and navigate the medical side of everything that we've had to do. And, and yet we're still showing up, not just showing up every day, but we're, we're showing out. We're still have plenty of energy. And so that's a tribute to everyone in Marion County Public Schools and, and the hard work that everyone does every day, including the folks that are still sitting here. I, I think of you too, when it comes to taking care of each and every employee. I know from experience, a lot of you take my calls at six, seven in the morning sometimes, and yet you're still sitting here this evening. So if my math is right, we're going on at least 13 hours of your day away from your home and families. And that's to be appreciated and acknowledged. So thank you very much. At least now we don't all have to come back tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. for an emergency school board meeting. So there's that. Yes, during a tornado drill, no less. I wondered how we were going to navigate that, but I figured, you know, we're just strong, bold and brave, so we'll find a way. And I was just going to come. The second thing on my list is union negotiations with the M E A. I remember as a teacher, the trepidation of not having a contract, not knowing what was happening, wondering what was going on. So if there's anything, and I'll just speak for myself, but I imagine the rest of the board probably agrees that if it takes extra meetings, you know, to, to get this moving forward, let's get these folks a contract. Let's, let's finish the drill. We've had so much uncertainty. And when you have departments that have fallen into illness, you know, we just haven't had the same availability of people to, to do the background work that it takes before you can even bring us anything. And, and I do understand that. And I hope the, all of our employees do at some level. But whatever we can do, or whatever I can do, you know, let's, let's do it because we've all been through a lot. So anything we can do to check it off our list and keep rolling would be great, in, in my opinion. Next thing is, on February 14th, Valentine's Day, we get to take our attendance response committee on the road to Emerald Shores Elementary School. Whoop, whoop. And I'm really looking forward to that because the attendance response committee was born out of the recognition and the need that if we were ever going to get Evergreen and Oak Crest out from under external operation and put them back on a path to success or, or new beginnings, that getting kids to school regularly and on time was the foundation for that. So I just wanted to give a quick shout out to Wayne Livingston, former principal of Evergreen Elementary, Ashley Kemp, Educational Directions, which was one of our early external operators, Jane Elsperman. That was on Evergreen. On the Oak Crest side, we had Diane Leinenbach, former principal, Kathy Bayless, former principal, current principal, Chris Sandy, also with the support of Jane Elsperman as an external operator. Our technology department, Randy Taylor, who has since retired. Hopefully there's not a correlation. No, he was retired. And also Brian Tindall. They were wonderful at creating and running a weekly, it turned out to be a weekly data report, with all kinds of, of information about student absences and tardies and trends. And it was just a tremendous effort, but it made all the difference in getting it done. And you know you've really done something when other schools begin to ask, well, tell me about this attendance response committee that you had. You know, we're not stuffing it down their throat. We're just doing something that was really special and that worked. So I'm really looking forward to that meeting down at Emerald Shores coming up on, on Valentine's Day. It aligns completely with our strategic plan. But it took, what I noticed tonight from our FFA student, that you can learn a lot about from kids and animals, right? When you hear about camaraderie, when you hear about leadership opportunities, when you hear about perseverance and unity from a student, that really hit home with, with me. I mean, that kid is a lot younger than we are and, and understands the importance of those elements that I just described. And, and that to me just exemplifies, you know, the hard work that it takes to truly work together. So I'm, I'm really excited about that.
She mentions Sheri Loria.
Oh, Ms. Loria, yeah, the guidance counselor.
She was the actual brainchild of all of that. So those people you mentioned, but I know Sheri Loria is the main reason. And, and I hear that and I want to make sure she gets that recognition because.
Absolutely. And Shayna Jennings, our social work assistant, you know. You, you try to, and that's, that's the, that's a little bit of the risk that you take when you start naming names.
Well, that was just one.
Because the teachers had to support it. Yeah. And, and.
She was the guidance counselor and she saw that need. And so I just wanted to make sure she was acknowledged.
Yes. I'm really glad you said that, Kelly. I consider Ms. Loria not only a professional colleague, but also a personal friend. So I don't, I don't mind being corrected on that one at all. And that's what it takes. So that's, again, just something really to celebrate. I also wanted to share that as far as the SAC, that came up this evening. And I have really enjoyed serving on the SAC and, and attending the meetings for Vanguard High School. It really is something that I would encourage each school board member, if you haven't had the chance to connect with your schools at that level, to do that. They, they appreciate it so much that, that we take the time to do that and really hear what's, what's going on and, and hear from parents as well. And then the last thing I had, I think, is, this is probably the most amazing part of the night, on top of a lot of other amazing things. It happened just as I was coming in this evening. I was informed by our homeless department. I just popped in to say hello. And they shared with me that they had a family they were working with. The mom and quite a few children, six to be exact, had been in the Salvation Army shelter for six months. And again, due to the unity, due to the collaboration, due to the, just the, the efforts of, of our department, our homeless department, to try to help make things better for a family. This particular mom is now employed by Marion County Public Schools and is on her way with her kids to having stable housing. And that wouldn't have happened if it weren't for the people that care enough to make things like that happen, that notice things and then do something about it. So I just felt like that was just, that made my night tonight. I didn't care in some ways how long tonight went. And I never really do. But, but to have something like that be acknowledged to me just before a meeting started, that just made me realize all over again how fortunate we are in the hard work that we do and the difference that we make. So that's all I have for tonight. Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
Yes, thank you, Chair. Let's see. So Tallahassee, wow. What an exciting time. And it's already been detailed out. But the, the angle, I was there Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, like wearing this old man out. I had to come back and have about three days of, of rest and recovery. Stan McLean, I just want to go down the list a little bit. And we've got these guys in a power position. And this is important to know. Stan McLean used to be out of, out of the county as a commissioner, most of you know. And he is moving into a senior position, really has our interest in heart, at, at heart. Very powerful. Any ideas you have, you don't need any special invitation. You can either deal with his office here or deal, deal with him up there if they're in session. They're completely ready to go. Dennis Baxley, and a senator, he's senior, will have a, he's going to lose some of his district here in the next go around, but he'll have the base right down in the southern, right at the southern border of Marion County. So he's our man and he's going to be handling this. And he's going into senior. And it's essentially our legislative delegation. Keith Perry will have our situation here in Marion County, border to border. And again, senior. Now, senior really matters. They will see you anytime, anywhere. Don't need, you know, anywhere in their office. You've just got to, just, just let them know. Or not even let them know. Just you can do, they call it a drive-by. You just go on by and see them. But we have, I, in, in all my years dealing with the legislature and with the governor's office, and I've never seen such a powerful position we're in. So I want to bring that up. And I think everybody got the feeling too, that, that these guys are not shy. They're ready to go. We've got Joe Harding, new and energetic. I've never seen anybody hit the, hit the ground so solid. He's, he's ready to go. Yvonne Henson immediately wants to come down and, and do work down here at the other end of the county from where she is to help advance the cause of one of my special projects at Stanton Weersdale. So we are, the chancellor, ready to go. The governor, real generous. The governor's office jumped in immediately, opened up time. We have a power center up there. And if we just utilize it, I think we can do an awful lot going forward, especially this mental health thing, golden apple thing, these, these, these things we have moving in that can help our, our, our students, ultimately, the students, but the, the teachers, the, the pay. I'll, I'll bust over into the pay thing. We have so much. You, you, you guys notice I, I pull and I've taken a lot of flak for it, but pull these things off this consent agenda. I would like, as the superintendent, I'd like to see in writing the, how these things get on the consent agenda. Because I, I just need a, number one, I would like to, I would like to see for sure the definition be correct. You got to have five before they go in. If you don't have five, it's not a consent. And then these, there's just so many wonderful things. I timed it today. I hope that, hope we have better timing on it, but I think it took us a half hour to cover a huge amount of things that are really important to people. Also, you do not need, like, I, or you don't need an association to get to see your representatives up there. Anybody in Tallahassee, be it the chancellor, Department of Education, the governor, I don't care. You can get in. And it, it's a, it's a home run. But this F, F S B, I would like to, and I'm not really going negative here, folks, so don't, don't get nervous. But I was, I was troubled by some things in this last meeting with them. And I would like to know how much we spend with them, Superintendent. I'd just like to see a budget piece. And I'll just go straight to you on that. I could do it in private, but I, I'd just like to see that. I had an age assist issue up there this last time. I do travel with people at my age. You're looking at 80, you'll understand it. And that was not, that was not welcomed. We have a policy about, you never have to apologize for your age. And I don't. I'm happy to be alive, happy to be on this planet, one of God's children. So that's, that's something I'm going to be looking at. I'm not totally off on it at this point. I've touched enough, I think, on the consent idea. We'll have the written paper. I'd like to see that in writing. I'd like to know what it is. I would also like to know what we have, what the, what the, the policy is for our board assistance. I, I personally run into, to problems getting board assistance. I cert, I have secretarial service now, thanks to the superintendent getting that handled. Got some issues that, that have been resolved.
Mr. Browning, can we?
Yeah, I'm moving, I'm moving on. But I'd like to see in writing what the, what the rules are in terms of board assistance. Like, what do we expect? That's just the way.
Mr. Browning, Mr. Browning.
Yes, sir.
Elena, please. Mr. Browning.
I'm sorry?
Can we just move beyond that, please?
Well, I am. All right.
Thank you.
So if we have that in writing. And that's all I have, Chair. Thank you, sir.
Appreciate it. Vice Chair.
As we're nearing the fourth hour of our meeting this evening, it, it's quite unfortunate that some of the folks who were here earlier aren't here now, but I completely understand why they're not. So I have a very important matter that I would like for us to discuss, but I'll first do the quick things that we've already talked about, School Counselor Week. Grateful for the work that they're doing. And I did mention that one of our legislators is trying to put forth legislation about guidance counselors doing the work that they're trained to do. And we'll see where that idea lands over the next few sessions. I'd like to offer a thank you to Professional Development Team and, and Ms. Biddick and her team. They've put out a lot of great trainings on Code of Ethics and Title IX and the Strategic Plan and others. And they're assigned to board members as well. So I, I've actually had a few employees that have reached out to say, oh, I can't believe they're sending this training. It's just one more thing. And while it may feel that way, it's something that we're doing as well. And, and having done those trainings just in the last week or so, they're very valuable and actually helping us align with the mission and vision of the district. So while it may feel like just one more thing to employees, please understand the value and the importance of those. And again, grateful to Ms. Biddick and her team for, for, and I'm sure that folks in Technology Services as well, putting some of those things out. We mentioned Tallahassee and, and we've mentioned advocating for our students. I believe, if I'm not mistaken, this is the first time in at least a decade, if not longer, that all five board members were there together, as Ms. King noted. And so I was grateful for my fellow board members to be there. And also, as Board Member Browning alluded, I'm grateful for the strong delegation that we do have representing Marion County. I am looking forward to our upcoming Neola work sessions, working through additional policies that we have. And I was going to thank Chair Cummings also for calling our board meeting about COVID that we already took care of. Okay. So the last thing that I'm going to mention again is something that is quite important and I believe deserves our attention. And you all know that whenever we ask the team for specific board requests, that they give those to us and they often send to all the board members. And this particular request that I asked for, I received just kind of before the board meeting to get all the clarity that, that I needed. And I wanted to address it all with you before it was sent to all of us, because I felt like if you just received it, you wouldn't understand why it was being received and why you're seeing it. So, so let me chat through it just a little bit. So in a few minutes, we're going to be addressing expulsions and alternative placements of, of several students in our district. And in looking back over those recent packets that we've had, I noted one common theme. Nearly every one of those students that we have expelled or alternatively placed, which we don't even see the alternative placement report cards, but I'm going to say that all of our expulsions have had at least one D or F on their report card. And that's for the first semester. Some had multiple failing grades on the first semester. So I actually asked the team to pull a mid-year report of the numbers of students at the secondary level in our district who received a D or an F for the semester. So that's not just the first nine weeks or second, for the semester. A D or F in totals are alarming. More than 11,000 students, roughly one half of our middle and high school students, received a D or an F in fall 2021. In some schools, more than half of their entire student bodies had at least a D or an F. But the report that I had the team compile for me didn't stop there, because I specifically asked for them not only to pull those numbers, but also to pull the numbers of parents of those students with Ds and Fs who logged into Skyward to check their student grades even just once. And that number was just as shocking. More than 7,000 parents of those students with Ds or Fs did not even check on their students' grades one time in the first semester. So I understand that it's possible that one parent may have multiple children and they may look at grades at one time, as well as some students may view their students' grades using their students' login. So I understand I could be accounting for a little bit of that. However, I dare say it's not 7,000 of those numbers. So coupled with our overall student attendance, that's hovering below 90%. And we get those reports daily on attendance, and Ms. Thor just touched on attendance. And frankly, that comprehensive data that we receive is skewed because it accounts for every student at every grade level. And thank goodness for our elementary school kids who actually are coming to school a little bit more so. But if you look at our secondary schools, on some days, some have nearly 20% of their student bodies who aren't in school. I want to say that apathy among our young people is real. And it's time to have a serious community conversation. And I'm sorry we're having it in the fourth hour of our board meeting. But apathy among young people is real and we have to have a real community conversation around it. and we have to have a real community conversation around it. Community, parents, churches, civic groups, we need your help. I wanted to look at this data now, in the middle of the year, while we can make a difference. Because I believe that if we put specific plans in place, we can move this dial toward the positive and change the trajectory of our students for the sake of their families, of our community, and of their own futures. So, Board, I'm open to creative solutions. How can we get parents and other family mentors to hold students, and mainly our teenagers, accountable? It's like following up what our Rookie Teacher of the Year, Ms. Kimball, said and what Ms. Bender said also. How can we get parents more involved? Parents and even adult mentors, I'll even extend it to that. Whatever parents, family members, whomever we can get. Can we have computer terminals in every school office to help parents be able to view student grades? Can we partner with the public libraries to help parents access student grades there? Can we work toward mandatory regular parent conferences when our kids are struggling? Even if we do all those things, how do we hold students accountable? As a professor, I go into each semester, and I did this semester as well, telling my students that I want to give them all As, but it's up to them to do the work. And you know, I've had to give some Ds or Fs myself, as much as that pains me to do. And when it comes to attendance and lack of effort and just plain apathy, those students receive Ds and Fs because they deserve them. So what can we do to change this narrative now? Not at the end of the year, when students have taken their end-of-course exams and potentially failed and not gotten their credit for the class and all of those things. What can we do now? Because I don't want to look at FSA scores at the end of the year and be like, "Oh, my, we see this coming. We know this is coming" by looking right now at semester grades and looking right now at families who aren't engaged in those students' lives, who are failing in class. So what can we do? Because, Board, I am open to ideas and ready to be part of the change. And that's all I had. And I'm sorry I'm passionate, but I'm not sorry.
It's a great talk.
Vice Chair Campbell, I don't think you have to be apologetic about doing what's best for kids. There's, all of us are here for that same cause. I wouldn't apologize for being passionate about kids. Again, good evening to everyone. The hour has far spent. And I want to first thank all of our staff that have been here all day and that have went beyond and above the call of duty to pull different things and get the information that we needed to make decisions in regards to this district. I promise you, I'll get you out of here in a few minutes, so you can go home. And thank you, Board, for being willing to come in tomorrow for a special board meeting. However, we resolved it tonight. It's going to be cold in the morning, so you can stay in a little bit longer. So I thank you for that. Everybody's already talked about Tallahassee. Tallahassee was a, as the other board member said, it was the first time that all of us, all board members from the districts of Marion County were there at the same time and heard the same thing and pushed the same agenda. And it was very, very, a very good opportunity for us to push initiatives in regards to our staff. We did talk about closing, widening the gap between new teachers and senior teachers. Just for the record, we did talk about mental health. We talked about the underfunding of the kids from PPK and such. So we were there advocating for our district and making sure that the people of Marion County are represented in the decisions that are being made at the Hill. One of the ones, one of the things that stuck in my mind and that really kind of caught me was the fact of Representative Valdez, I think it's the name, Valdez from Hillsborough County. And she pushed forth, she's pushing forth a bill in regards to certificates of achievement versus high school diplomas. And we spend roughly about $9,000 a month, I think they said $9,000 a year per student, basically, from kindergarten or first grade to 12th grade, paying about $98,000 in 12 years or something. I might have the math wrong, but about $98,000 for a certificate of completion. That's the highest-paid certificate that doesn't have any teeth to it. So we need to be pushing our kids to get their diplomas and not certificates of completion. And I'm praying that this bill that she's pushing, this initiative that she's pushing through, the legislature would go forward. And we, our kids are coming out with diplomas and not certificates of completion because they really don't mean anything from what I'm seeing and what I'm hearing. Congratulations to all of our school counselors. It is National School Counselor Week. We thank God for you guys, especially during this time. Your jobs are already hard as it is, but in the time of this pandemic, this up and down, these trends and all these different things that we're going through, you guys are dealing with a lot, and we really thank you for the job that you do. A week isn't enough for what you do. And then I want to thank Ms. Barber and her team for the years. I know since I've been on the board, Ms. Thor and I are on the board in the same year. The push to get the exemplary district was a hard push because there were so many different things that were, that need to be done to get our district ready for that. And I'm looking forward to tomorrow getting an email saying that we are the 11th district in the state to become an exemplary district. I think that's the start of us being, doing other great things in our state as well. I heard a lot tonight about parent engagement and getting the parents involved. Parents taking interest, taking an interest in their kids' education. One of the things that I happened to, intentionally not happen, I intentionally was there a few weeks ago, two Saturdays ago, in Northern Marion High School, the parent university. That was one way of trying to get parent involvement. And I have to say that the majority of parents, that they have a desire to want to be in their kids' life and do things positively for their kids and to help them to get their kids. And I think that's, Dr. Go, that is one positive way of us as a district, not pointing the finger and chastising grown folk, but as a way of trying to help them to come up to the table and be a part of the solution. Because I think sometimes our talk, what we say from this setting can sound condescending and can sound as much as being chastising when we may not know all of the situations, why that parent may not be where they are and why they can't be there. Some parents are so concentrated on just trying to keep a roof over their head, as we just heard Ms. Thor say about how our department back here that is trying to get people out of, into better housing and things such. So I just caution us as board members that when we say things and we have to take in consideration that everybody's situation is a little bit differently. And you're right, you're right. There's a lot of parents that don't care. But there's a whole lot that do care, and they just can't do all the things that maybe you or I as parents can't do, can do. So I want us to caution that as we do that. And then finally, and I'm going to go because I want to get everybody out of here. I want to thank this board tonight for being proactive in taking care of our staff. We say it all the time that our staff is valuable. We say it all the time that our staff is our jewels. We say all the time that they mean the world to us, that they're family. When we make decisions, we have to understand that we're making decisions for family. We're making decisions for those jewels. We're making decisions for those people that create the environment for education for our kids. So I thank you guys for looking at the situation and saying, "Let's take care of our people. Let's take care of our family. Let's take care of our staff." Because it's a hard job to wonder if you have a job when you get sick. If you've ever been sick for a long time and not knowing if you're going to get better or if you've got to choose between getting better or going to work sick or whatever, what have you. We should not ever put them in a situation where they're trying to figure out what they have to do. So again, I thank you guys as board members. Thank you, Superintendent, for when I reached out to you and Ms. Oliver over the weekend and attorney about the situation. You weren't looking for a reason to say no. You were looking for a reason to correct this situation. And I thank you, board members, for accepting the call that you were going to be here tomorrow morning. Thank God we got it resolved tonight. So again, thank you, guys. And with that being said, I conclude with my comments for tonight. May I have a motion to approve the expulsion of students JD 2207E, JD 22079, and JD 22080 with educational services through the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year and the first semester of the 2022-2023 school year.
We, before addressing expulsion matters, board members have received the alternative placement list for students through January 21st to 2022. And Ms. Martinez-Lopez, are there any parents who have submitted a timely request to speak on their child's disciplinary matter?
No, for Chair.
Okay. Now, thank you. I read that early. Y'all forgot. May I have a motion to approve this expulsion of students JD 2207E, JD 22079, and JD 22080 with educational services through the remainder of the 2021-2022 school year and the first semester of the 2022-2023 school year. Moved by Ms. King.
Second.
Seconded by Vice Chair Campbell. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed, have the same signs. Pass unanimously. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn?
Submit.
Moved by Vice Chair Campbell. Seconded by Ms. Thor. All in favor, signify by aye. Meeting adjourned at 9:29 PM. Thank you.